Okay, let's get started. The open session of our July 20th Ripon Area School District Board Meeting is called to order in accordance with open meeting laws. Jolene, would you take the role, please?
Nicole Dash. Betsy Heffernan.
Here.
Andy Like.
Here.
Josh Reader.
Here.
David Scott.
Here.
John Spurger.
Here.
Tom Stelmacher.
Here.
Nate Zimdars.
Here.
And we have Gary Rodman as well. We have a full board. Gary?
Thank you. This meeting of the Ripon Area School District Board of Education has been properly noticed in accordance with open meeting law. I will now read our district statement of vision. We are one of Wisconsin's finest school districts, fostering excellence through all through innovation. We accomplish this vision through our core values of integrity, excellence, commitment, collaboration, innovation, and kindness. We'll now go to the public comments section. Jolene, I understand we have one person signed up?
Yes, we do, Gary.
Okay, Michelle Martin, it doesn't appear that Michelle has been able to join our meeting.
Gary, I just looked through our roster of people who are online and I'm not seeing her name on the list of people who have joined us for this meeting yet.
Oh, you know what? I did the wrong thing. We're on written comments and I should have asked for that first. So Michelle Martin, one more chance to address the board on our agenda items today. Jolene, were there written comments that you received?
I did not receive any written comments, Gary.
We'll move on to adopt the agenda. I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda or propose an adjustment of tonight's order of
Gary, it's Betsy. I move that we adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Betsy.
This is Nate. I'll second.
Thank you, Nate. Agenda is adopted. Okay, we'll now move to announcements of contributions to the Ripon Area School District. Superintendent Whitrock?
Thank you. We have a number of donations that I want to share with you. Quite a few of them are really based on the work of Warren Sherman and Tom Stelmacher, and we want to thank both of them as they are going out to resell all of the advertising signs that are on Ingalls Field to raise money for additional projects to improve that venue for the district. So a big thank you to both of those gentlemen. And then I will share those names of those businesses who have signed on to advertise on Ingalls Field. First, I would acknowledge that Webster's Marketplace donated $1,000 in memory of Gabe Carznea, and that was donated to the Ripon Education Foundation. So we have Aether Insurance and Financial Services, which is the State Farm Insurance, donated a $10,000, and the rest of these are all for Ingalls Field. Cliff Tire and Battery, $2,000 of a $10,000 pledge. Culvers of Ripon, $5,000. Fortify Bank donated $4,000 of its $20,000 pledge. Keatley Electric, $5,000. Hillside Dental Associates, $2,000 of its $10,000 pledge. Holman Ford and Chrysler, $2,000 of a $5,000 pledge. Madro Electric, $2,000 of $10,000 pledge. Modern Overhead Door, $2,000 of a $10,000 pledge. MVP Builders, $1,000 of its $5,000 pledge. Pinacle Plumbing, $2,000 of a $10,000 pledge. Quality Plumbing, $1,000 of a $5,000 pledge. Schmidt Lumber, $5,000. Silver Creek Dental, $4,000 of its $20,000 pledge. And Yellow House Realty, $1,000 of its $5,000 pledge. And again, those last ones were all donated to the Ingalls Field Group, which we are very excited to have them up and running again under the leadership of Board Member Tom Stelmacher and Community Member Warren Sherman.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you to our very generous donors, and a special shout out again to Tom Stelmacher and Sherm.
Thank you, Gary.
For their constant and enduring dedication to Ingalls Field. Now we're going to move to a special presentation by our reading specialist, Jill Pullman Becker.
The memo that I see Jolene is pulling up for us, thank you, that I have submitted is very different, just because this last year was very different than we have had years in the past. So we typically look at data from the end of the year. There wasn't data to look at at the end of the year, really. So we have, I did leave in just kind of the background of what's happening in literacy at each of our levels and some continued goals to move forward on, and would be happy to answer any other questions, but yeah, much different than other times.
Do any board members have questions for Jill?
Jill, this is John Spurger. In your summary of key steps for next year, you state the first comment there is face-to-face instruction is possible at the beginning of the year, you're going to do some benchmark testing, and if it's not, what's your plan?
You know, if it's not, the benchmark, the benchmark assessment is not possible to do not face-to-face, so we will need to think about how we can help the teachers with some assessment if they are, if we end up starting fully virtual. It's a little, it will be challenging because even, I think iReady has said their diagnostic should be done, should not be done if students are at home rather than in the school building. So we'll have to really look at what is going to give us a good, the best we can measure of where readers might be. It's, we can listen to them and do some informal assessment. It just won't be a more formal benchmark, and it'll give us some information, just not everything we're used to.
Hey, Jill, so a question that just popped into my mind. How then do we assess the kids in our Odyssey school?
I actually don't know how they do assessment because their platform is so different than even ours when we're virtual. The platform is very different. So Rebecca maybe could answer that question?
Sure, I can add to that. Since we are virtual, we have a commonality among all of our students. We do use the iReady assessment, which I know the rest of the district uses. We just do it, you know, from their homes. It is different. Because all of our students at Odyssey are taking that same assessment, it's hard to compare to the brick and mortar, but in regards to our students, that's our comparative. We do use the Early Literacy Screener, the ESGI, virtually. That is all online, and the teachers meet one-on-one with those students and walk through that, just through like a Zoom or Google Meet hangout meeting. So we are able to get math and reading data. Again, you know, I don't know if it's, thinking about it differently with the iReady. I've reached out to many virtual schools to ask about using the iReady assessment, about the validity of it, because when you compare moving from a brick and mortar to a virtual setting, a lot of educators question the validity. But if we're all using the same thing and all students are taking it in their home, you know, it just gives you a common ground. So maybe it's just a different way of thinking about it than you're used to, you know, in the brick and mortar environment. But our teachers do do running records, the Fontis and Pennell assessment. They just do that on Zoom. Have the book on there and the students read to them, and they can record.
Thank you. Are there other questions about the reading specialist report? Trying to move to the next. Next, we have motion to, next, we have the consent agenda. I'm sorry. Next is moving, I need a motion to approve the minutes of our, of our most recent meetings.
So moved.
Gary, isn't that under the consent agenda?
Yeah, I think you're right. I am having a little, having a technical issue. Here we go. Yeah, so Nate, you moved acceptance of the consent agenda. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second this, Andy.
Thank you, Andy. Before we vote, does anybody need to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Gary, I just wanted to ask a question.
Okay.
I was curious, as we are accepting professional staff resignations, are we doing exit interviews?
I guess you're, are you directing that to Mary?
To administration, yeah, to the administration.
Yes, we do exit interviews with our staff as they leave the district.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. I'll call for the vote on the consent agenda. Okay, and that passes unanimously. That takes us to new business. The first item on new business is the roadmap for reentry, the plan for starting school this fall. I will take a motion, put the action item on the floor, and then we can discuss and
Gary, part of what you were saying was breaking up, at least on my end. I'm going to ask you, just for the sake of clarity and for the public, to restate that so we can be crystal clear on what you have asked for.
Thank you, Betsy. The first item of new business is the roadmap for reentry, which is our plan for starting school this fall. So I will, I will accept a motion to put the plan on the table, and then after it's moved and seconded, we can ask questions and discuss.
Thank you. I heard every word of that. I appreciate it. And so moved, Gary.
Thank you, Betsy.
Tom seconds the motion.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Mary, would you like to present the plan, or how would you like to proceed on?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll go forward and just hit highlights, and I would ask board members if you have questions about particular slides. Please feel free to have me stop to ask questions so that we can, we can go through it together. So the plan, which was developed with a leadership team in the district, created this document, but it was really a collaboration with the Fond du Lac County Health Department, following their guidance, as well as superintendents as they were building their plans across the state. And I think you'll see that many plans do have similar elements as we look to have students go back in the fall. So just starting out, and Jolene, I don't know, yeah, if you want to present so that everyone can see the document, that would be helpful. Our commitments are, of course, around safety with students, but also wanted a plan that would be flexible to allow for us to respond based on our capacity as well as financial resources and what we're seeing in terms of numbers and cases within our area. And then also in terms of instructional plan that would reflect a preference for that traditional classroom learning and having students be in school if we're able to do that. So the plan was developed in multiple areas: operations, instructional model, professional development, and stakeholder input. And again, it's meant to be fluid so that throughout the year, we can move between those models, really ranging from in-person to a completely virtual like we experienced in the spring. So first, under operations, just looking at our physical space, some of the considerations that we'll be looking at is having those plexiglass barriers in public spaces, making sure that we have directional stickers to look at our high-traffic areas and make sure that we encourage that separation and social distancing, having signage for good hand hygiene, and again, that physical distancing, but also monitoring of symptoms so that that becomes part of our process and procedures as a district. And certain things are going to have to change, like drinking water, filling bottles, using one-time cups instead of actually having the drinking fountain being used, having sanitation stations, places where we have hand sanitizer available to continue to practice, as well as good hand washing techniques. We're going to have to look at our locker usage and how we rotate students through using their lockers so they're not all at their lockers at the same time, and also consider the use of backpacks to allow students to have the resources that they need within each of their classrooms. So we know that's going to have us look at our actual space in our classrooms differently by removing furniture and reconfiguring those workspaces to make sure that we have that social distancing. We'll also need to set up an isolation room, different from our regular sick room when students need to be in there to receive some additional care, but being able to really have students that are identified with symptoms similar to those we see with COVID, being able to have them in that isolation room, and then have the corrective PPEs necessary for staff that are in those spaces.
Mary, this is David. I'm not sure if this is the best time to ask some of these questions, but I'm going to stick them in here to start with. So as far as the signs for, in the hallways for distancing, I'm not exactly sure what's meant by that. Distancing in what ways? I mean, I understood that maybe there's going to be new directional patterns of flow for people to walk, but are we talking about when they're just standing and waiting to go someplace, that there'll be markers that help them keep distanced? Are we talking about keeping, I just don't have a picture, I guess, of what it's going to look like in terms of, is there going to be two-way traffic and we want to keep them separated, or is it directional traffic and we're trying to keep them kind of strung out so they're not in big groups? What exactly is the signage attempting to achieve?
Yeah, and I think some of those things are still being worked out as staff come together to work through those in buildings, but probably some of each. Some will be directional if there are changes to flows of hallways, but certainly just some of the markers to remind that this is a place where social distancing needs to occur, because I'm just seeing those Xs can make a difference. And then certainly out at the beginning of the day, as we are bringing students in, making sure that they do have actual markers to stand on so that they keep that physical distance before they're brought into the classroom. So I really think, David, it's probably some of each of the things that you described.
And as far as the drinking fountains, the bubblers, are they actually going to be shut off, or are we relying on students to use cups, or how's that? I mean, some things are built just for filling bottles, and so there's no problem leaving those on, but a regular drinking fountain, you could let the water go into a cup, but I don't think I trust students to do that very often, so I'm just wondering what the plan is there.
And I would probably ask Brian, if you're on and you can hear me, to address that or what you know about that, or what our plans are for responding to that.
So just to respond, we've been really diligent putting in bottle fillers when bubblers have been failing, so we do have quite a few bottle fillers in every, pretty much every area of a building. Barlow and Murray are pretty set up, the high school, a lot of the new stuff with automatic bottle filler. So we're looking to continue using the bottle fillers and possibly shutting off the spouts just so we don't have those multiple touch points and everybody drinking out of the same spout. And then my plan is to have single-use cups in every single classroom. That way, they're available for students if they forgot their water bottles and things like that.
Okay, thanks. And the isolation room, so I assume that's if somebody comes down with COVID symptoms, we would put them in the isolation room and they'd be picked up by their parents? Is that, am I?
Correct.
Okay. And what happens if the parents don't show up? Because I'm told that frequently when kids are put, so to speak, off by themselves to be picked up because they're not feeling well, the parents sometimes don't show up, and sometimes the kids end up right back in the classroom again.
Yeah, and they wouldn't be able to go back into the classroom, and certainly parents would need to come and pick them up in this situation. And then we would just work through emergency contacts to call the next person on the list of the parents not responding within a reasonable amount of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question, important question.
Mary, I got a question for Brian around that ventilation of, you know, into the schools. Are there things we're going to have to do to the buildings to make that happen?
So I'm working with both contractors that we have with the district to look at increasing our outside air flow, and then there's traction to run the ventilation overnight to completely purge the building. Still working on plans as to what we're going to be required to do, but we would be increasing the outside air coming into the buildings.
So any additional expense to do some of that work, or do we have the capability to do it today?
Well, all of our buildings are now on digital controls, so it would just be changing the minimums on them to bring in the outside air. You know, there is some other technology out there that I would be looking at, but that would be very expensive, and the rewards haven't really shown as expected as they thought it would. But it's definitely something I keep on the radar of, you know, how can we ensure that we're having safe, clean air?
Yep. Thank you, Brian. Sorry, Nicole.
Okay. I just wanted to follow up on something that David had brought up, given the different signages and things like that. Are we then going to increase the presence of hall monitors or people that are regulating or enforcing any of these types of social distancing protocol-type things?
That's a good question. Likely, the teacher will be in the hall with the students, so they'll be able to assist with that. And part of it is just making sure that we don't have all the students exchanging out in the hallways at the same time, so that there's less individuals in the hallways.
Okay, and then another thing that you had talked about, the isolation room. We have only one RN and one LPN for the district, correct?
Correct.
So I guess a question I have then is because COVID presents very similar to just general colds or other types of respiratory illnesses, how are we determining that this person needs to go into isolation?
Go ahead.
I'm just curious if it's just the one RN and the LPN. Do we need to increase medical staff in order to make these determinations, or how that's going to work out?
In conversations with the health department, they're creating a flow chart for us with the specifics, and then if we have a student that has those symptoms, that they would be sent home and could then be tested to see if they truly do have the virus, so they may need to be out for a number of days while we're in the process of working to determine that. But they would certainly be able to have some contact with their medical provider to determine kind of next steps in that process.
Okay. Is the isolation room going to just be set up for, say, one student who needs to go into isolation, or, I mean, if we're screening at the door and they have symptoms and they're being sent home, then if they have those symptoms during the day, they're going to be isolated? Is there just more than one area or just one area?
We're talking about an area, and depending upon, you know, I guess, as we see numbers and those kind of things, how many spaces we would need. But our goal is to make sure that we keep those potential cases away from students who might be going into the office to get a Band-Aid or something like that.
Okay.
Mary, I have another question around the communal spaces. I'm just thinking like the, excuse me, the community room. I know the community church was using the auditorium on a weekly basis. What's the plan for using those facilities going forward?
Yeah, at this point, we have not opened facilities to outside groups. I think we probably need to just get our students in and see how that goes first and see what happens as schools go back here in the fall. This is new ground for all of us. And when we look at that communal spaces, it would be regular scheduled classes. It wouldn't be the normal flow of a class that could go in and use a different space quite as flexibly as they have in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
So I don't know if there's anything on the health environment slide. And I know that Dr. Like is with us too, so Dr. Like, if there's anything that you want to jump in and add, feel free to do that as well. We're certainly in a position where we're following the recommendations of medical staff and the health departments. We're certainly in a position where we're following the recommendations of medical staff and, and the, the health department, so.
With regard, with regarding the environment, is there a thought of increased use of the outside? Of, of meeting outside at all during the months?
Absolutely.
That would be possible?
Mm hmm. We have, we have talked about that and, and certainly anything that we can do like that. It just allows us to increase that, that physical distance between students and to be in that, in that space with, with fresh air and. I think we're still going to have to work with our students to have that social distancing even when they're outside. And they have all that space. It's going to be a lot of training with the, with our students when they come back.
Mary, I had a question about the cleaning and disinfecting.
Mm hmm.
Are we going to bring in, in outside providers such as a cleaning service to help with some of that daily cleaning and disinfecting? Or is that a responsibility that is ultimately going to fall upon our janitors and other support staff?
Yeah, and Brian, I can let, let you address that one if you'd.
So we're still trying to plan. I know a lot of teachers have expressed, you know, just continuing some of their practices that they've done, especially in like the elementary schools. Where they wipe down their, their student desks and things like, things like that already previously. Really, really my big, my thing is working with my guys, working on the high touch points. Sanitizing all the, the high touch points and then really focusing and keeping that at bay. And then trying to get everything else accomplished. I, I'm thinking with, with some of the buildings with less students. You know, the increased workload might equal out. But we're, I'm hoping for the best and we'll see, we'll see how, how, how things go and, you know, kind of adjust as we need. But really, really focusing on those touch points and, and desktops and door handles and things like that. That would be a high transmission area. And, you know, not focusing as much on the, on the general cleaning, like vacuuming every single day and things like that. It would just be kind of like an every other day kind of thing, just kind of to even out the workload.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification and that insight, Brian. I appreciate it.
I have a question about the symptom screening. I don't know how to ask it. It's more a worry than a question, I guess. I know from years of experience that there are lots of parents who load their kids up with Tylenol to keep their fever down. Are we worried about that?
Yeah, of course, of course we are. And I think the bigger message is we are all in this together. And we sink or swim together. So if we have parents that are doing that, for one, when the Tylenol wears off and we redo the temperature check midday, we'll, we'll know. That that temperature is, is increased, which certainly will help us at, at least at that point. But to know that the more we practice and use these safety procedures and follow them, the greater chance that the schools will be open for a longer period of time. And so we are in this together, asking people to cooperate. And certainly not knowingly sending someone to school that has symptoms, but, but maybe they're masked. All right, we'll go down to the operations day-to-day. Just looking at in cohorts with the elementary schools, really having them move in those, those static groups and staying within their, their class of, of 22, 23, 24. And limiting the interaction outside of that classroom environment. And again, we talked a little bit about trying to regulate access and directional flow of the entrances and exits. We had a lot of conversation around face coverings and what that would look like and what was practical, given the age of our students. And, and what we're seeing in the community. So based on those recommendations, you'll see that masks would be required at the middle school and high school. Because that physical distancing will be difficult even with the cohorts. And that we would require masks, not only in the classrooms, but in those common areas like hallways and restrooms. And that at the elementary, generally our elementary staff is going to have masks on. Especially when they're moving between desks and assisting students. And that we would require students and staff again to have, have masks on when they're moving about in, in hallways, restrooms and in the common areas. But there is a challenge to having really young students wear masks and a risk that they're going to be touching their face and nose and, and their, the mask. Maybe more than they would if they didn't have the mask on and that that could actually increase risk. And I guess this is a place, Dr. Like, if you would be willing to jump in and just share with us what you're seeing in terms of, of cases with young children. And with, with older children and, and why the recommendation is as it is with face coverings.
Okay. Well, fortunately, we haven't seen a lot of pediatric COVID cases here in Ripon. So we're really relying on the experience from China, Europe and other parts of the United States that have seen a higher volume of cases. Although the virus appears to have a respiratory transmission, the young kids are not. The main drivers, the way they are with other colds and particularly with influenza. For some reason, the younger kids don't appear to be infected as often and they're not good spreaders of the virus. So it's far more common for a parent to infect their child than it is for a child to infect their parents and the other adults around them. At my office, we've been masking our staff and anyone who enters and exits our building routinely. And I would echo what Mary says, that these kids are required to wear masks, that they are constantly touching them, adjusting them, taking each other's off. And I think that that's probably a, a bigger risk and that our efforts are better spent on keeping these kids heavily co-horted.
I have a question then. What do we mean by younger kids? I noticed that California just instituted an eight-and-over mask policy, so for them, younger is under eight, which would be a nice. That would be Barlow Park and so forth. It would be a nice split there. We've decided to move it three years older than that and I'm wondering. I guess I'm wondering, because I think the kids are going to have just as much trouble distancing themselves as they would. I think they get used to masks because they certainly have in other countries.
So I think that's up for the district and our, you know, public health partners to, to determine. You know, I think definitely at the pre-kindergarten level and, and at Barlow Park. But that would be a, you know, decision of Ripon if we wanted to do it at the Murray Park Quest level.
Dr. Like, what's the, what's the ramifications of having these kids at that age have a mask on that long?
Um, what do you mean by that, John?
Well, if they're sitting in a classroom or sitting in the hallway wearing a mask, say out of a, I don't know, a typical, what? Seven-hour day that they have, eight-hour day, if they're wearing a mask, how many hours? Four hours, five hours? What's, what's the health concern that we might see out of these kids having that on that long?
I think, well, the first concern is, you know, them touching surfaces and touching their faces. I mean, we're talking about COVID-19 here, but most other respiratory illnesses are spread, you know, by touching objects and touching your face. So now we've got kids who are spreading other respiratory viruses that may look like COVID and we have to sort them all out and send them home. The other thing I think particularly with the younger kids is the social ramifications of having their faces covered and their teacher's face covered. So there's developmental concerns about these kids who are learning to speak, who are learning to read expressions, who are getting non-verbal feedback from their teachers and peers. And I think that's going to be really difficult with the younger grades if they are masked for hours per day.
I agree. Thank you. Mary, one other question, high school, middle school, high school. What's the plan to handle band, choir, you know, shop class, things like that?
Yeah, it's a good question. And we're actually in, in contact with, with Sandy. She's made some recommendations for some particular types of PE, PPEs that she would like based on, you know, the instrument a student might play. But she said more recommend, more recommendations and guidance is coming out here that we should have shortly to, to give us a little more guidance in terms of, of best practice for that. Of course, if they're out on Ingles Field and, and spread out across the field, there's some, some nice social distancing there. But when you're really working on the nuances within the band and the choir as well, we're going to have to look for those recommendations from, from those organizations.
And what organizations are she getting the recommendations from?
It was a national music organization. I can try to pull it up here, but I can send it to you too. Just in terms of, of what kind of that, that national conversation is, just to follow suit, you know. What, what is helpful is that we're not the only district that's looking to make these decisions. And so there really does quickly, as these questions come up, become recommendations for, for best practice. And what, what is believed to be helpful and what, what other countries have, have done and what they have seen. And that's really what we're doing is just trying to follow that, that guidance and, and knowledge.
Mary, I want to talk to you. It was from the Wisconsin School Music Association.
Thank you.
Document you that.
Thank you, Chrissy.
No, thanks, Chrissy.
Dr. Like, I had another question for you regarding how we want to teach our families to practice hygienic care of their masks. How often their kids need a new mask, how often the masks need to be being laundered? Looking for, you know, any skin breakdown behind the ears from wearing the mask for hours at a time? Just things that maybe we want our community to be aware of, you know, when they're purchasing masks for their kiddos and cleaning them and things like that. I think, you know, first and foremost, they have to be the correct size and reasonably comfortable so that the kids aren't. Constantly trying to adjust them. I think the ear loop style often stays on a little bit better. It's easier to put on and off without contaminating your hands. And of course, it would be easier for younger, less dexterous kids than trying to maneuver the ties. One of the best recommendations I've heard about hygiene for the mask is that you almost need to treat it like your underwear. You want to change it regularly and definitely if it's wet or soiled.
I know we were provided through the state, the state is actually sending out masks to each school district. And the goal is two masks per student. And we have talked about as a district actually retaining those masks on a rotational basis so that we can actually do the laundering within the district.
Mary, could you say more about the item on the slide that says, "High-risk staff and students, limit exposure and provide alternatives"? What kind of alternatives might be provided to high-risk staff and students?
Yeah, and we're actually in the, in the process of learning more. I'm actually attending workshops and, and conferences next week to learn more about that. And what that looks like based on specific needs of, of staff and, and what they know from, from their doctors and, and those kinds of things. So I'll know more as it, as it comes forward. But certainly probably the greatest alternative that we have for students is to provide a fully virtual option if it's, if it's not possible. Or families feel it's not safe for them to be at school. And then again, looking at what we can do within the school environment. If there's anything that we can do to improve circumstances for either staff or students.
And the question of field trips, what kind of field trips would we even think about allowing? It doesn't seem like a very good idea to me. You just.
I would, I would agree. I would agree. Perhaps it's a field trip out to a nature area. I don't know.
Okay.
But certainly those would, would, would be limited and monitored and, and as you said, maybe there, there wouldn't be any depending upon, upon what they were. All right, I'll move on to the next slide for operations is transportation.
Oh, um.
Oh, go ahead.
With regard to cohorts.
Mm hmm.
Could you be a little bit more specific, I guess, in how the cohorts will be comprised? I, I know that there are some parents who are wondering about, if they have multiple children in, in a, in the school. Would they be able to be put in the same cohort somehow?
Well, it's a very good question. Gearing at the elementary school, the cohort really is the classroom. That the students would, would be in and would stay with that group of students throughout the day. So that we're limiting exposure across that, that group of students and, and teacher. And at the high school, I know it wasn't in the plan, but within, in conversations and I think Randy's on here. Just to, and just to be able to talk about what, what it looks like at the high school. And there really isn't a perfect way to, to split up and, and create those cohorts. So I know one of the ways that we were talking about was just dividing it along the lines like we do for counselors where maybe A through L. Students come on, on those days and M through Z come on the other days. Just to, you know, there's, there's no perfect science to how we split the students. The, the most important thing is hopefully that we want less students to be in the building at any one time. And be able to provide for less exposure across the entire student body as well as be able to spread students out in the space that we do have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mary, you mentioned the cohorts in an elementary school staying together as basically a classroom. And I'm curious how with the new charter, that would be feasible? I remember the conversation, one of the selling points being that if you were an older student, but you needed help with a certain subject matter or what have you. It would basically be, it would be fluid. You would be moving from different thing to different thing. So how are we going to be implementing this new charter theology in this new COVID structure?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And Tanya, I would let you just explain some of your thinking around that. And, and what you're thinking may be possible, given the limits that we're facing with COVID.
Um, so can you, can you just repeat, repeat that question, Mary? But you're on mute, sorry.
Question that Nicole was asking. Actually, Nicole, I can ask, have you asked the question again?
Sure. So we had spoke, you know, last full year about the new charter program and, and how students would be able to be kind of. It's going to be determined by grade or age, it would be more like level of activities or competencies, different subject matter. And so seeing that it was a fluid model, I'm curious how we're going to try and implement such fluidity when COVID is kind of requiring, you know, a different way to, to remain in a cohort, I guess.
Yeah. Thanks for re-asking that. Well. And it, and it actually, it's, it's providing some challenges, not just for the new charter, but, but for existing charter as well. They also have a multi-age time during their day and then, you know, some close collaboration with it in project-based learning. So it is something that we're going to have to adjust in general as a building. I have been working with both the Governance Council for Barlow Park Charter and the teachers. And we're talking about some different ways that we can make use of some of the tools, the, the virtual tools and things that we had learned more about in, in March. And begin to make use of those tools so that we can still have those groupings, but without actually having to do it face-to-face. For all of the different subject areas. So using some of the virtual tools with classroom support. And, and being able to have kids kind of tap into different lessons that are geared toward their needs at any given moment.
So that interaction would be more online?
Um, some of it would, some of it would be, but then. Um, some of it would, some of it would be, um, but then, um, it would be with the, uh, classroom teacher that's in there supporting them. So they might get, uh, maybe the mini lesson online, but then the actual work time and support and small group would be provided by the class, uh, the teachers that, that's with that group of kids at that point in time. It's certainly our hope that at some point we're going to have a vaccine and we'll be able to go back to the way that we had originally planned things. But, um, that's kind of how we're planning to, to start off at the beginning of the year.
Are we okay moving on to transportation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so, uh, one of the things that we're looking at, obviously with transportation, the less students on the bus, uh, the better. We have some limitations just in terms of not having more buses and bus drivers available. Um, so what we've talked about, um, certainly, um, by splitting the high school into cohorts, we're going to be able to, to minimize some of the, the traffic that we would normally see on our buses. And, um, you'll see at the bottom of the student capacity, we're, um, waiving that high school student parking fee, um, to encourage, um, students to, to travel, um, independently if possible. Um, but then on the bus, just really trying to have fewer students per seat where possible, um, by assigning seats, um, and having families sit together. Having students sit at the window to provide for some physical, um, distancing. And then again, uh, just really encouraging parents if they don't need to use the bus, um, to avoid using that just because it becomes one more, one more place, um, that we have to look to in terms of, of contact. Should there be a positive, a positive case. Um, we certainly will require students and bus drivers to wear a mask, um, while they're on the bus. And the bus would be disinfected following each route. Um, and of course, we do have some routes for our students with special needs, which we would follow, um, the same kind of guidelines and, and work with families on that. Um, and, you know, use masks where appropriate depending upon, um, the needs of the students. Um, one of the things that we spent a significant amount of time talking about were really the shuttle sites and the number of students that are on those, um, those shuttle sites. We had a, a pretty consistent practice where we would allow students to, um, be on those to shuttle to other schools. Um, and one of the things that we looked at, um, again, was making sure that we disinfect those buses after they have their morning route, um, before they would, uh, go out to the shuttle sites. Um, so we're aware that, that may cause our shuttle buses to arrive at school a little bit late. And, and we're just going to need to be flexible with what we do during that time to make sure that, um, as those students arrive, um, they're able to be assimilated in, go through that health check, have their temperature check, um, and be ready to join their, um, their classmates. And later in the, in the, uh, presentation, you'll see that, that we've, we've adjusted the end time for Barlow Park and Murray Park. Um, so that those elementary students would be picked up first and then they would go to the middle school and high school. So we wouldn't have a situation where middle school or high school students were shuttling, um, to Barlow Park or Murray Park. Um, and then just a, a reminder to parents that you would only sign up for the shuttle, um, if you plan to use that shuttle, um, uh, most days. We're, we're going to be in a situation where we need to get information out to families and we're going to err on the side of caution and then kind of back up from there. So we have, um, students that get on the shuttle bus. Um, we don't necessarily take attendance on that shuttle bus every single day. So when those students get on the bus, of course, the bus driver knows them and, and recognizes them. Um, but we don't always know exactly, um, who's on the bus each day. So we will need to go through a process of reviewing tape, um, in the event that we have a student who's, who's positive to make sure that we know exactly who was on the shuttle bus. Um, so if there is a positive case, it's likely that anyone who signed up to use the shuttle will be quarantined until we can verify that the student was not on the bus, um, and bring them back to school. So that's why we're making that suggestion to parents, um, to not sign up for the shuttle and be on that list if, if you truly, um, don't use the shuttle. That, that just helps us with our, our tracking of students, um, as we move through the year.
So, so Mary. Yep. Mary, you have a, a question in the chat, but I also have a, another question. So if somebody would test positive. The test takes how long to get done? I mean, I've seen anywhere between a couple of days to almost a week.
Yeah, and, and.
So.
Doctor Lake.
What are you going to do?
Yeah.
Yeah. What are you going to do with that bus and those students for the period of time that test is waiting to get results back?
Yeah, what we know is we would need to have them quarantine until we could verify that it was safe for them to come back. We're going to have to err on the side of caution.
Are you quarantining just the person or the whole, everybody on the bus?
Well, uh, the recommendation might be, um, it would probably be initially the whole bus until we could verify who sat closest to that student and was within a range that, that, um, we would be concerned about.
Would you be quarantining the bus driver as well?
Um, it, it probably not because of that student wasn't sitting right up by the driver. They probably weren't within that, that range with the bus driver for that 15 minutes that the health department is looking at, that, that consistent contact. If it was a student who was sitting right behind the bus driver, then, then, um, then that's possible.
Okay. You do have a question in the chat though, if you haven't seen it.
Um, I haven't, hold on. And if someone wants to read it for me, that would be great.
Yeah, it's why the change for elementary getting done earlier? Uh, it seems like their children will be on the bus for an hour in the morning and almost two hours in the after, after school.
Uh, yeah, and, uh, we're just getting to the part with the, the instructional models. Um, we're going to be asking our teachers to provide a face-to-face model of instruction for those students who are at school. Um, as well as a virtual model for those students who aren't able to be at school for whatever reason. It could be a, a normal illness, um, or it could be that they're quarantining or they, they have, um, tested positive for COVID. Um, but maybe are well enough to attend school virtually. Um, and we need to provide teachers time to do that. Our teachers put in an extensive amount of, of time to develop the online components. Um, and to ask them to do that and have their regular caseload and not provide any time for them. Um, that just, it's not going to be possible. So we want to make sure that at the end of the day, our teachers who have, you know, as they're teaching a mini lesson and recording that lesson, have time at the end of the day then to post that to the students who are at home virtual. Um, so if, if we have students who are, um, at home, um, and working with their class, they would, they would be able to receive those, those taped, um, video lessons. And also give the, the teacher a chance to interact with those students if there were, were questions or, or concerns. It's not going to be as extensive as it was when everyone was virtual, um, but we certainly want that time for them to check in. Good question. Any other questions on transportation?
Somebody had sent questions to all board members and, and so I'm just going to read this one out and make sure that we explicitly get the answer. I think we have the answer, but, um, as I was trying to register for the school year, the instruction was to only sign up for the bus if your children would consistently be using it. I'm hoping to provide transportation, but what happens if I need the bus here and there?
And, and certainly, again, they, they certainly can sign up and, and be on that list. It may mean their child gets caught up in that, um, those, those couple of days of quarantine until we're able to get through that list. And, and adequately, uh, provide exactly who on those days, um, was sitting near that, near that student. All right. Um, so I'll just go forward into the instructional model to the in-person learning. Um, and again, our goal is to return to have students, um, in the classroom. Um, and, and again, just asking staff to be flexible as, as we work through this. And we have new tasks and procedures that we need to, um, go with students in order to have them return to the classroom. Um, we know schedules will be modified a bit. Um, we're looking for elementary students to at least initially start with lunch in the classroom. Um, and be limited in terms of, uh, other student exposure at recess, whether that means using other parts of our physical space. So classrooms can be separated a bit, um, out on the playground, you know, limiting what, how many classes or which class may be on the, the equipment that's out there on a given day. So there will be some adjustments and modifications. But again, our goal is to keep kids at school, um, and not have to move to that full virtual model. Um, we certainly know that the students that are coming back to us, um, have had different experiences while they were away and just with the stress of the virus. We're going to need to address that and, and make sure that we have a solid, um, social emotional foundation to bring these students back, to reboard them as well as our staff. Um, and then have everyone adjust to what this new, this new reality is as we come back. Um, so there will certainly be some components, um, for our social emotional learning. Um, and there may be additional resources, um, and support work and systems that we need to put in place that we haven't in the past, um, just in order to, um, to be able to forward. Um, certainly as we mentioned that we want to have that online or virtual option, um, for families who are not comfortable having their children come back. Or may have a family member that is in a high needs, uh, category. Or when a child is actually out and, and in quarantine, that they're able to continue to learn with their clients and, and stay, um, with their class so that they're able to come back when possible. Um, one of the things we know is going to be really important is that ongoing and systematic communication, um, so that we, everyone knows on a regular basis when updates come out and when they can expect it and, and what to be looking for in terms of what we're seeing. Um, so we'll be able to, to provide that on a regular basis. Um, and then just the fluidity of, of moving between the models, um, and monitoring the, the positive cases that we have within our community or within an individual school. Um, or actually in a classroom, um, because that will cause us to shift, um, into a different model. And, and parents will need to have a plan if their child's classroom, um, were to, um, move into a 14-day quarantine, making sure that there's childcare available. Um, not convenient, obviously, um, but something that's necessary so that we can, um, keep rolling forward, keep as many classrooms in place as possible.
I missed that. I heard childcare.
In-person.
I don't know if that's what she said or not.
You know, I would, I would just, um, say to some of the folks that are attending the meeting right now, who are having conversations, that we can hear your side conversations. So please be mindful of your mute button. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm, I'm muted. She can't hear.
Um, actually, yes. Whoever is saying that, we can hear you right now. And, and we heard the conversation before. So please be mindful of the mute button. We're, we're glad you're with us, but it'll help the meeting go more smoothly.
Mary, can you speak more about the actual criteria? What exactly would cause us to move from one model, one model to another? Um, obviously, if a student in the classroom gets COVID, then everybody, including the teacher, goes into quarantine, right? And so that would be, that would move us to, for that class, that would move to a virtual environment. But what happens? What happens if somebody, um, travels out of the state? We're going to get to that point later on when we talk about the travel ban, but that would also throw us into the virtual model, possibly. It might just be a student, but if a teacher left the state, then the teacher would have to go into quarantine and it would be a virtual model. If the teacher gets sick, presumably everybody goes into quarantine if the, and the teacher will continue to teach virtually if the teacher is able to. Otherwise, what happens then? We look for a substitute teacher to teach virtually?
Correct. Correct. And then in terms of just, um, those larger, larger situations where it would be within the, the community or individual school. Um, you know, certainly we saw this spring, um, that we had, um, recommendations across the state, um, where things changed rapidly. We may have recommendations coming out, um, from the county just based on numbers, um, where we may be to a certain point where it feels best for us to be separated from each other.
Do we, does anybody know what those criteria are going to be? So for example, in Germany, they lock down if you get 50 new cases in a week per 100,000 people, which is kind of nice because our county is almost exactly 100,000 people. Last week we had 67 cases. Would we have closed down and gone virtual in that situation? Do we know that? Do we have numbers like that that we use or are we going to play this by ear?
Yeah, we, we asked, um, we asked to have, uh, that criteria shared with us to kind of get a flow chart for what it looks like. Um, and, and I know there's a number of different, uh, samples and frameworks out there. Um, and, and Doctor Lake, I don't know if you can speak to that a little bit. I know that, um, Deanne shared a couple of the, the models that, that are out there, um, just looking for what that, that Ebb and Flow, um, what that Ebb and Flow might be. Um, and when it might signal for us to move to a new model. I know in the county, it's Mondays at 2:00 that they post, um, and update their, um, data dashboard, um, in terms of what they've seen over the past week. And then, um, and if they do that daily, um, they, they update that. But then on Mondays at 2:00, they actually will put out and, and adjust that dashboard with, um, kind of what phase they're in, um, based on what they're seeing happen.
Yeah, I haven't seen any specific, um, numeric criteria as far as what would, um, cause the county to move from one model, um, to the next. They do update the statistics every day at 2:00, um, and with a summary on Monday. I think, um, you know, one of the, um, tenants of this model is, um, regular communication with, um, the, um, all the stakeholders in the Ripon District. And I think it would make sense to reflect that schedule.
Do we, I, I guess I'm trying to get an idea of who makes the decision. We're in Fond du Lac County, but we're in this position where our district is in three counties. And so what, who makes the final decision? Um, and are we going to try and blend information from all three counties or what are we, what are we going to do?
Yeah, and we're really waiting on, on the specific guidance, um, regarding that. And then to be able to communicate that out to say, you know, here's, here's what our, our criteria is. Um, and, and that certainly is what we do with the snow day. Here's our criteria, here's what we use as our triggers. And then, um, when those things happen, um, we're able to make a decision to, to move forward. We're, like, again, I think we're waiting for more specific information on what that looks like. Um, but I really, I do believe in, in some ways, David, it will be a conversation, uh, between us and, and the representatives from the counties around us. And it may be a collaborative conversation with three health departments that, that are a part of our district and where we're at and what we're seeing with numbers in the community and within our school. And looking for kind of that collective recommendation.
Thank you.
And right, right now, the county reports all of their data for the county. So it is not specifically broken out for, um, the city of Fond du Lac, the area surrounding Ripon or Wapon. So right now it's reported county-wide as a protection for medical privacy.
But do we, do we actually have, or not us, but does somebody actually, is somebody actually able to see that information and know, you know, basically within the school district of Ripon, this is what's happening? Um, so that we don't make decisions based on what's happening in some other part of the county that's totally different from, from us.
Yeah, David, we will know, um, if we have positive cases, um, within our, our staff or student population. Because we'll be a part of the conversation just regarding that, that social contact and, and who's, who's been in close proximity to, um, to that student or staff member when they were with us. Um, what we won't know is who was close to that student or staff member outside of the school day. So that's going to be information that has to come from, from the staff member or that student's, um, parents. Um, and then we're looking to have, uh, those parents cooperate with us. If say a parent has to quarantine, they're responsible for contacting the school district to let us know that they're in quarantine. They've tested positive and so, you know, their child needs to quarantine as well. So we're also looking at kind of that direct contact and indirect contact. Any other questions on the in-person learning? All right, then we'll go to blended learning. Um, and I guess before I, I move off in person, I don't know if there was anything else that, uh, principals or any of the other staff wanted to share that been a part of, of developing the model. I know we're going to get to where we move between the models and, and get specific for, for elementary and high school, so. But feel free to jump in. Um, in the instructional model for the blended learning, um, we're looking. we're looking at that schedule where Cohort A would attend on Monday and Thursday and be virtual on Wednesday. And that on Tuesday and Friday, Cohort A would go virtual and Cohort B would come in to actually attend classes. And Wednesday would be a day for just additional deep cleaning, some teacher prep time, and time for teachers to work virtually with students and for teachers to connect with students who are only virtual. One of the recommendations across the schools and through the health department is to close campus for lunch. That will be different for us because our students have been able to come and go. But in this case, when, you know, you're, you're tested, your temperature's been checked and, and you enter into the building, that you would stay in the building and practice that social distancing. And we certainly, again, will, will make accommodations to, to spread students out and make adjustments to the way that we serve lunch, whether it's in boxes or pre-ordered to make sure that, that there's good hygiene and practice during that lunchtime. In fact, I know that, that Jonah was meeting today with, with Bryony Storz, our food service director, to have some of those discussions. We know our students would have their district device. And in the last year, we really looked at that home internet access when we went all virtual. And one of the things that we'll look at, at the beginning of the year is just making sure students have that access to a hotspot if they need it for their school device, so that no matter what happens, they have the internet access that they need. Because we recognize things can change quickly with a student if their family needs to quarantine, or even within our district, if we need to, to quarantine a group of students. So we want to make sure that that home access is there. And, you know, I know Travis was on earlier. I want to say we were around, I don't know, 40 or 50 hotspots that were, that were out to students, just to make sure they had full access to it. Don't Travis about what?
There was 65 total.
65 in the end, okay. So just making sure that students have devices. But Travis, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit to what you're looking at ordering in terms of teachers to have access to be able to record lessons and, and be able to, to function, again, in that virtual and face-to-face world at the same time?
Yes, we're looking at different camera, mic systems that are out there that offer some different options. Currently, I'm, I'm waiting for some, some quotes on that because there are a few different options that, that are offered, that are offered where you could have just a portable camera system, a camera system that's set up in the room. This also includes a mic, by the way. Something that could be mounted in the back of the room, or something that would follow the staff around as they teach. So I'm working with different companies to get quotes to see what it would take for some of these different options to have on site.
Thank you. And, and again, just making sure that, that students and teachers have what they need to be successful and to be able to move between models as, as needed. So certainly, we want to, to have that early identification, to be able to quickly identify students who are struggling to engage and be able to connect with them, because we realize, just as when we were completely virtual, that student contact was really important and the follow-up and making sure that students were on and doing the work, especially on those virtual days. And again, any of those additional resources or support that may be needed. Just reaffirming that, that our, our traditional grading system would continue as we move into, to these models. Again, the importance of that ongoing and systematic communication to staff and families. And then again, that, that need to potentially move between models depending upon what's happening with our numbers. And then the model that we're familiar with, because we lived at this, this spring, was the, the completely virtual model. The one thing that's, that's changed a bit, we had more of that teacher prep PD and student catch-up day was on Friday last year. And that's, that's being moved to Wednesday as just a better, a better place for that to occur and to be able to interact and engage. Again, the importance of, of having everyone have access to what they need, working to keep students engaging with us. And then, of course, the resources, the grading would, would be our traditional grading. There wouldn't be changes to that. There were some changes this past year with our, our elementary schools. We would look to, to have our traditional grading in the hopes that we'd be back face-to-face or blended in, in a short amount of time.
So if you go virtual, Mary, what, so if it's just an issue, I'm, I'm trying to think of how this actually works. So suppose a teacher gets COVID. Let's just say it's a chemistry teacher at the high school. So chemistry class goes virtual. Do the students still come to school the same way, since they're already going to be in school for other classes? And then they simply log in, so substitute watches the room and they log in and do the virtual sitting in, in the school?
Yeah, that's, that's likely what would happen on those, on those days if the teacher is able to continue and, and be with the class and, and would be just quarantining, that they would be able to continue to provide that learning to students. And there would be a staff member or substitute that would be actually with the students that day. But they would receive their content, their mini lesson, and that interaction from that certified teacher. And there's so many scenarios and it's.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So you're saying the chemistry teacher, if they were to come down with COVID, would still be providing instruction?
Well, it depends. Be able to. I was, I was saying that, I was trying to come up with a circumstance where the students would not have to be away from the school, but the teacher would have to be away from the school.
That they're quarantining because they might have a family member who's positive. And so they are able to work. But there may be a case where they aren't able to work because they may have contracted the virus and, and they aren't able to provide instruction. In that case, the sub would take over and.
Yeah, and we wouldn't expect someone sick with that, yeah.
Absolutely not. Although it's probably harder for us to get the teacher to realize that sometimes than, than their, their principals. You know, you're sick, stay home and, and we'll take care of it, we'll, we'll survive, so. But yeah, it would be totally based on, on the needs of the teacher. And then instructional model for special education. Probably, you know, one of our most challenging areas just because so many of our students really benefit from that face-to-face interaction. And we certainly would have that at the elementary level. But things may look a little different depending upon IEPs and what those students need. We may find students needing or benefiting from more time in that self-contained special ed classroom as they come back, or being able to be in their classroom a little bit more. And I know that Becky isn't on with us to be able to, to answer questions. Becky Moore, or, oh, is she actually at the, if you're able to join us, Becky?
Yes.
That you, that you want to, that you want to add. I know that you're going to be working just individually with families to figure out kind of the best model as you interact with teachers.
Exactly. We know that there's going to be some families who have students in medically fragile situations that are going to need different access to education than students who want to be in the building or who would benefit from being in the building. We also know that there'll be some students who will have a hard time during virtual learning. And if we can get them into the building as many days as possible, that would be a benefit for them. So we'll, we'll really be working with teachers to, like Mary said, on an individual basis, looking specifically at student needs and parent wishes.
Any questions about special education? All right, I'll just move down to social emotional learning. And again, just information around reboarding and bringing those students back and, and what those, those first couple of weeks will, will look like. There's certainly a lot of new information and procedures that we're going to need to share with our elementary students. And balancing the need for them to be cautious and not so fearful that, that their anxiety level is up. But there's going to be room and time for some universal instruction. And M.E.S., our people's service director, I would let her speak a little bit more specifically to some of the elements in this part of the plan.
Thanks, Mary. Yep, so the gist of it is going to be kind of focusing on that tier-one learning for our students. So again, making sure as we bring students back, you know, are they ready for all the changes that they're going to see in their school buildings? Are they ready for those changes that they're going to see in their classrooms and just the way that they interact with their peers? We're putting together right now some information for teachers, specifically elementary school teachers, that they're going to be able to kind of prepare themselves for what those conversations with students might look like. We're also preparing a document for teachers where they can just have some common language. And again, that'll be particularly to our elementary school levels, but certainly would make sense for all levels. Just to kind of make sure, that's where I think a lot of the questions are going to go. Our parents are probably going to ask teachers questions and we want to make sure that our teachers are equipped to answer those. But then, in addition to that, we will have some, as you see under resources there, some systems of support in place. So that's going to be relying on not only the training of our people services staff, so our counselors and psychologists, but also relying on our community partnerships. Providing training for not only, for our teachers and our staff, but also making sure, again, that our families have the information in their hands that they need to have conversations at home with their students. So that's kind of the gist of it. Obviously, there's some more information in there, but we're going to rely pretty heavily on our SEL program that we have right now. So that's going to be Character Strong at the 6 through 12 level, and then Purposeful Peo-, Purposeful People, excuse me, at that pre-K through 5 level.
I mean, I did have a question on the SEL implementation. A lot of the literature that I've been reading, both sides of the debate about returning to school, you know, kids in the building, virtual, et cetera. A lot of the focus has been on it's important for human beings in general to be able to be social, to interact with one another, and to help maintain a positive mental health outlook. So if that's one of the cornerstones as to why it's so important for us to kind of get our kiddos back into school and back into their community settings, are we integrating these SEL, you know, maybe activities, lessons, things, daily to specifically address, you know, their impressions of the change, their reactions to the change, how it's affecting them? And, you know, help them to process the way that things are, are turning around?
Yeah, thanks, Nicole. It's a great question. So to that point, we are going to be relying on, like I said, our, our universal system is that Character Strong and Purposeful People. And I'm actually working with the founders of the program to make sure that they're implementing some of. So to back up a little bit, the K through 5 level of that program was brand new this last year. And we were one of the pilot districts. And they were super impressed with how we did everything and how we rolled everything out. So I, because of that, have been able to be in really close contact with the people who created that program. And as a result, they've kind of come to us a lot for input. And so some of the input that we gave was, hey, we need a roadmap, you know, to what you're saying of, how are we going to make sure that our students are equipped to come back? Because SEL in and of itself is great, but we're dealing with a whole different beast right now. And we need to make sure our programming is aligned to what our students need. So actually, this next week, I have another call with the founder of the program. And they are using the same languaging as us, the roadmap to returning. And they are rolling out their program for how teachers can have, whether it's at the elementary level, those morning meeting conversations, or at the middle school and high school level, those advisory conversations. How does that look? And how do we make sure that it's related to not only everything actually happening right now with COVID, but also everything happening with things like the Black Lives Matter movement and culture? And how are we making sure that everything is staying relevant to what's happening right now for our kiddos?
Sure. I mean, that's great that you bring that up because I did have another question, especially with like our minority students and the social climate being so different lately. How are we, in the middle of a pandemic, going to reach out to kind of help those kiddos and, and other kiddos try to understand and dabbed and move forward in that realm as well? So that's great. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, and, and this will be one element of it. Another element, we'll be using, utilizing those funds from our mental health grant to make sure that our staff is receiving the cultural training that's going to be relevant and necessary for them to get back to school.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
I just have a question about, I mean, we want to get our kids back to school because we really want to get back to normalcy, but isn't it going to be normal? And from an SEL point of view, one of the issues I'm wondering about is my experience working with kids from 5 to 8, in particular, 5 to 9, is when I'm coaching them in soccer, they run up and hug me all the time. And I think it's the same thing with teachers. And I don't think that should be happening, but I don't think that's good for the kids if they feel rejected because their teacher doesn't want to hug them. And I'm just wondering what the advice is for teachers and, and how that, what kind of effect is that going to have and, and how it should be, how should it be dealt with?
Thanks, David. It's a good question. And it's definitely one that, you know, in conversations with our psychologists and counselors, we're talking about. The best answer I can give right now is we're going to be relying a lot on the information that's being put together and put out by the NASP organization, which is the National Association of School Counselors, as well as the American School Counseling Association. So they are creating and putting together some of these, I'll call them like Talking Point documents, for our teachers to address those specific things. So how do I make sure that I can build rapport with students who have never seen my face because I'm wearing a mask? Or who I can't, you know, at the elementary level, I can't go kneel down next to their desk necessarily like I would? So a lot of that literature is going to be coming out. And those are going to be, I can't give you a better answer than that right now, but those will be the sources that we're relying on and looking to, to guide our teachers.
Thank you.
David, I can add on to that. We do have our teachers at our building also focusing on creating some social stories for our kids to be able to view when they come back and for some of them before they come back. And, and looking at just the, the new lens of school through a playful way as well to just kind of prepare them for what they're going to see. As an example, one staff member is writing a book called Who's Behind That Mask? And it's got a picture of a staff member with a mask on. And then the next page is a picture of a staff member without the mask on. So it's just getting them to be able to start to experience some of these things before they come to us, so that it's not bombarding them all at once.
Are there other questions related to social emotional health? A really important topic. All right, I'll move forward and, and look more specifically at, at elementary. And again, we're looking at that movement between the in-person and virtual on a class-by-class basis as we move through the year. And I think Chrissy, you and Tanya have worked and Renee with this. I don't know if there's anything else that you want to add around specifics. I alluded to the fact that our start time would be the same as it has been. And there would be no late starts. But that dismissal time would be a little bit earlier. And we would have our buses pick up our Murray Park and Barlow Park students and then head to the middle school and high school to pick up riders there. We have had conversation about after-school care because of that shift in, in dismissal, that we would provide after-school care for parents that needed their children to have that, that coverage and care until the end of the typical school day, at which time our Brave Community Learning Center program begins. So we would have coverage for students then through, I want to say it's about 5:30, depending upon the school. And in these, these slides related to elementary education, you'll see under the elementary schedule and calendar, just what we're looking at within those, that first week, having the students come back, only half of them at a time, so that they can have some of that practice and interaction with the teachers. And then that endpoint is, again, providing some additional time with, with teachers by having that last Friday in the month being a, a prep and planning day so that they can be able to meet the needs of individual students and, and be ready for that. So I guess I would open it up to Chrissy and, and Renee and Tanya, if there's anything you wanted to add, and, and then if there was any, any questions.
Mary, this is, this is Renee. I just wanted to clarify, we had talked about busing being separate for elementary and then secondary. I'm not sure if we are still looking at doing that, particularly just, you know, again, to be able to keep those subgroupings smaller. But then at the same time, the scheduling, I don't know how that will align. Maybe more people work early.
Yeah, we had talked about that. And then what we found out through the bus company was that we don't have access to additional drivers or buses. And it would take almost twice as many drivers and buses to be able to, to do that. And so, so we weren't, but this was probably one way that we were able to, to work with that schedule a little bit, because, yeah. because, yeah, ideally, just having less students on the bus would be the preference.
Right. The other thing I would just mention about the one day a month for the elementary staff leaving early. Obviously, as you kind of talked about before, Mary, the plans are both modeled, the connecting with students that way. But also, at the elementary level, with us not having our late start Wednesdays, it will also add in the ability for us to do some professional development, some additional collaboration with our team and so on. So just wanted to add that piece in as well.
So Mary, help me understand this. So the elementary kids are only in seats two days a week?
No. Elementary students are in school all day long, or all week long. Just that first week of school, we were going to just have half the students come for those days. And it's just that process of practicing the social distancing, interacting with their teacher, getting to know their teacher, going through all those new processes and procedures. Just that first week of school, the students would be divided into cohorts. Only half the students would come on Tuesday and Wednesday, and the other half would come on Thursday, Friday. And then every week after that, all students would be at school all week long.
Monday through Friday. Okay.
Great. Great question.
Mary, I just wanted to say, I think that that's a really great idea to start out with our little bitty kiddos and the adjustments that they're going to have to make, to cut it in half and, you know, spend a lot of time just actually going through the motions and reorienting them to everything. It's just a great approach.
It wasn't my idea, but I will say thank you on behalf of the team. I don't know who exactly gets credit for that one. But yeah, when you hear it, you're like, oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
We have two questions. One's a real simple, technical one. The other one's a little bit bigger one. The first one is just, in making the cohorts, I'm assuming it would be possible to help some families out. I know, I don't know if it's a problem right now, but I know over the years, running the soccer program, we have lots of blended families where some kids in the family have a last name in the first half of the alphabet, and some kids in the family have a last name in the second half of the alphabet. And it sure would be nicer if they could know that their kids were going to be going to school. It would just make life a little bit easier for that first week if all their kids went to school at the same time. I'm assuming that wouldn't be too hard to arrange, if a parent asked?
I won't make any promises, but I would leave that up to the individual principals and buildings if parents wanted to contact them to make some shifts and adjustments.
Okay. The other one's a little bit bigger question. It's this flexibility. So movements on a class-by-class basis, and I wasn't sure... I knew part of what that meant, but I'm not sure about the whole thing. How much flexibility is there for a family to say, we want to do virtual, and then after a while say, okay, now we have a lot more confidence. We're ready to move face-to-face? Or vice versa? Somebody starts out saying, I'm okay with face-to-face, and decides, no, I really don't like this at all. We do not want our kid in the school. Obviously, you don't want people just flip-flopping back and forth, but is there some flexibility for them to make those changes?
There is. And with this model and the way that we've set up the schedule, that's exactly what it's intended to be, David, because it may be just the way the parent feels, but it might also be driven by 14-day quarantine periods. And that's why, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about, well, if you want virtual, can you just go to Odyssey? And the answer is, no, it's not that easy. Because if you're looking for that flexibility to move back and forth, you need your child to be in the same curriculum materials, learning the same things with the class in the same unit. And that's where this model allows a parent to maybe say, you know what, I'm not ready to do this. I want to start the year virtual. And then, as they monitor and watch numbers, they may get to a point where they say, you know, I'm comfortable. I want my child to come back, and that child would be ready to come back and join the class. So when we start out the year, we're starting out the year with, you know, desks and spaces for everyone that would be in that class. And that will be something we'll have to work with the classmates on, knowing that, you know, some kids may not be here because they've chosen to be virtual for however long as they want. And other students are going to come and go based on what's happening with the virus or other illnesses, just as in any other year. So it really is flexible, and it's going to be really driven by, you know, what's happening with the parent and what's happening with the family.
Okay.
Any other questions for elementary?
Okay, I'll ask one more. So I heard, I've seen some plans that would have... So I know you're taking the furniture out of the rooms to have as much space as possible for distancing, but I don't actually know the size of a room. And so does that actually give enough space for distancing at the elementary level? CDC says everybody should have basically a six-by-six square to him or herself. And are all the seats, I know in some places, all the seats are going in the same direction. You aren't going to have people pointing in different directions so that they're looking at each other. What are we doing with regard to these things?
Yeah, I'm going to let the principals answer that one a little bit. I do know that we've mentioned physical distancing in a number of places because, you know, we may be close, but not completely there based on the size of our classrooms. And we'll certainly do everything we can to be there, but we'll need to use, you know, students all facing the same direction and those kind of things. But I know they've got some creative ideas for even how to communicate with students what that social distancing is when they're not at their desks. So I don't know if anyone wants to jump in.
This is Renee. David, I'll jump in just a little bit. We've actually gone through our rooms and tried to kind of map out what would it look like if they had the six-foot distancing, for example, which is a guideline that we were given. We can get a maximum of about 15 kids, maybe 16 kids in a classroom. With that said, now, getting some furniture out, you know, certainly helps us, but we still have to have a functioning classroom, obviously. So we will certainly do our best to keep things separated, the best that we can. But it's not going to be able to be, you know, six feet per se, but again, spacing them out as best we can. We're also, you know, working with our furniture the best we can and literally talking about swapping all pieces of furniture from, you know, from one spot to the next to be able to account for as much of the facing at the same direction as we can. But kind of like was spoken to earlier too, in regard to our elementary students, they're little kids. And so, you know, just to kind of think about them sticking in one spot and facing one direction all the time, it's not likely. But, you know, again, we'll do the best that we certainly can. As far as the spacing and kind of helping kids to better visualize and understand even what distancing might look like, Brian is helping us out and getting us some swimming noodles for our classrooms, to have two or three in each room, just for them to have a visual reference of what would that spacing look like. But again, you know, we have to also work within the spaces that we have allotted within our building.
If I can just follow up, Renee, with you. How is it going to change pedagogy? So for the last many years, we've been working more and more with small groups, collaborative stuff, and that's kind of not what this is all about anymore. So what's going to happen?
Well, you know, to a degree, as was kind of talked about before, even I think by Nicole and Emmy, is, you know, we are not going to be able to just have our kids be separated at all points. We're going to need to look at, you know, if they are within a closer distance of one another, those are going to be the places where they're going to need to be masked. And yet, we've also ordered some like distancing dots for our carpet, for example, so that if they are sitting on the rug, but they're, you know, at least spaced out to a degree that we can, you know, that we can generate some of that spacing naturally that way. But again, kind of that's the part about talking about that cohort that Jeanne like had referred to as well, and knowing that it's kind of like, that's your family within your classroom, and we'll do the best we can to space them out. But at the same time, you know, they're going to have some level of, you know, obviously, interaction and potential exposure in the classroom. It's not going to be perfect, because we're opening the doors, and we open the doors, you know. Again, there's that element that we can try to control, and there's an element that we can't. But we'll do our best. I promise we'll do our best.
And I would say too, all of the wonderful resources and systems and devices that we've learned, apps that we've learned to use during our time virtual, certainly, teachers can rely on that. So I might be in a classroom with all of my kids, and they're in their space, but I've just pushed them into virtual groups, and they can have a conversation and engage in something, and then be back apart. So we still have those tools, which, as Tanya said, you know, we can use even in our face-to-face classrooms to be able to engage and interact even across classrooms. Because, you know, our kids are going to know there's another third-grade classroom over there, and they have friends in that third-grade classroom. And that will give them a way to interact with them on the face-to-face days when they can't be quite as close as they would. Because truthfully, you know, our classrooms will join together and collaborate across classrooms, and that's going to be something that isn't as possible this year.
Right. And, you know, it kind of goes to, there will be places, for example, I'll use our special education kids as an example, where there are going to need to be kids who are, you know, brought into those smaller group settings in the special education ones, for example. And so we are going to need to, again, mask those students, and, you know, we're looking at options of two. Could we get some kind of shields of some sort that we could have in place as well? So I know Brian is, again, working hard to see what's out there that is not a fly-by-night vendor, but something that is, you know, that'll serve the purpose of protecting the staff and the kids at the same time. So we're looking through all kinds of those options too.
Tanya or Chrissy, is there anything that you'd like to share?
Yeah, I think we also have to keep in mind that, you know, especially at the elementary buildings, especially at my building, that these are young kids. And so a great deal is going to have to go into the education on social distancing and how to be healthy and how to keep others healthy and safe. And then, while also balancing some of that social-emotional learning piece. If we were to, it sounds great to be able to say that we can tape off the floors and have them stay in their six-foot radius. But then, you know, when you put the face to that in a kindergarten classroom, it's probably not going to happen as much as we would want it to. And so it is going to have to be getting creative with just some of our spaces, but also with teaching our kids about their own personal space, how to respect personal space, and then looking into utilizing, like Renee said, some shields. And we had talked about having some Plexiglas at some of the smaller workspaces, David, so that teachers are able to do some of that small group work while still being safe in their own space.
One other thing, Tanya, that I know that you and I had talked about last week was even the possibility of, could we get for our little kids at least, or elementary kids? I don't know. Maybe the others could benefit too. But like a breakaway lanyard, so that they could hang their mask from it, rather than throwing it on the table or elsewhere. And again, putting their hands on it even more. So things like that, so that the masks are readily available, and they're not infected by other means.
Yes, and we've ordered some of those for our building. There have just been some websites that have shown how the breakaway lanyard can connect to the earpiece on a mask. So when the student is not wearing it, it's still hanging there around their neck, and they're not losing it. Otherwise, we're going to end up with a lot of masks in lost and found. And, you know, those accidents happen when going to the bathroom and things like that, you know, in an elementary building. So wanting to make sure that we're trying to keep those things as close to their bodies as possible. But yet, still maintaining safety.
Jeanne, that would require even further washing, if that was...
Well, while we're talking about the elementary, I know last year, I heard reports that there were an awful lot of soft lockdowns at Murray Park Quest. And on a pretty regular basis all throughout the year, which means that you're shutting... You're shutting down all the cohorts, which is fine, but it also means you're trying to empty a classroom of all but the person who's causing the difficulties. How is that going to happen in this environment?
I can speak to that a little bit. You know, in some cases, the students that are involved in those situations are actually a part of, not all the time, but are a part of our special education program. And so when we look at those individual IEPs and what's best for students and what students are able to handle, we're putting a lot on our kids to remember the social distancing, to learn in different ways, to remember the mask, to walk in the hallway a certain way. And there may be students where, you know, between the parents and the teachers will say, you know, it may be better for my child to spend a little more time in that special education classroom and push in for very specific reasons within the classroom. So that's certainly a consideration, because overall, the safety of all of the kids, given this emergency situation with COVID, does need to take precedent, and we need to make sure we can keep all kids safe. And we can't have kids having to move out because of some of the situations we've dealt with in the past.
Is the state likely to waive the requirement for fire drills and intruder drills and all sorts of things like that?
I haven't heard anything about that, that those would continue as normal.
That will require some planning.
And David, kind of, again, this is Renee, you know, to Mary's point too. We continue to work with kids and families to be able to refine practices and support the kids and get them the supports in place that they need. You know, as we have talked about as a full team before with the board, the, you know, the level of needs that are moving into our schools continue to grow. And we need to continue to adapt, to be responsive to those needs, but it certainly doesn't happen overnight. And so with that said, again, we've taken a lot of steps in the right direction to put those supports in place, but it is an ever-evolving process. And certainly, a joint effort with our team, our students, and our families.
Any other questions? Now, we're on to elementary schedule and calendar.
I was just wondering if there has been consideration in regards to if you're going to have after-school care and have Brave, which I feel like is necessary. Are the kids, how are they...
I'm not sure who's speaking. Is it a board member? Because it's not open for public discussion.
Okay.
But certainly, feel free to email me if you have questions. Or any of the...
Okay, thank you.
We'll get an answer back as soon as we can. I apologize for that. I was speaking over you too, which wasn't good. One of the things I will say, though, we know following the launch of this plan that we will need to do FAQs and some videos and other things just to help everyone understand the depths of the plan at each of the levels. And I know schools will be sending out communication as well, because there are so many layers to what we're trying to do to be able to get kids back at school. And we want to support families in that and help everyone to set up our kids for success.
I was just going to add to, Mary, this is Chrissy, that certainly, you know, you are seeing this document as an overview to the public, but we certainly, at each of our buildings, have teams of staff that are also assisting with some of those same questions, David, and other board members that you are asking as well. And we are in the process of creating a guidebook that will help guide our staff and will also allow them to provide input and even, you know, give us things that we have not even considered as well. And we will certainly be adding all of those details within those guidebooks for each of our building levels.
Thank you, Chrissy. All right, I'm going to move forward to middle school and high school. And this is a place where we're looking to have our students experience in-person and virtual learning, and by having a blend where they spend part of the week in face-to-face and part of the week in virtual. And again, our goal is to reduce total numbers within the building as we look to keep our students in school as much as possible. So we did provide in here, middle school and high school adjusted schedule. So in terms of... Um, so in terms of, of cohorts, um, and how they're, they're laid out, again, we're looking at cohort A. Likely being A through L in the alphabet and cohort B being M through Z. Um, and then you can see, here's just a sample, students would attend on Monday and Thursday. Or Tuesday and Friday, and everyone would be virtual on Wednesday. Um, and on short weeks, students would attend, um, cohort A, um, would attend the first and third day of that week and cohort B would attend the second and fourth day of that week. So we just put two sample schedules up here. Um, so, um, you'd be able to see how cohort A and B, um, would follow it. And of course, this would require that, that ongoing communication to, um, to make sure that, that students knew the schedule and, and what it looked like, um, for the week. But we'd be able to, um, push this out and, and communicate this as well. So.
So Mary, what pushes us to an in-person? What puts us away from blended and goes right to in-person? What's the trigger?
To be able to be all in-person?
Yes.
Um, I would say we'd need to get up and started and make sure that as we, um, are bringing all of these individuals together, um, that we don't see, um, spikes that are occurring, um, in our school community, um, that we believe are driven by that close contact of students. So we're going to be watching and, and monitoring those, um, those numbers to, to see if that's the case. And if it is, that would be our signal that we would be able to move, um, back to an in-person. Or if the numbers were really spiking, move to an all-virtual model.
And, and maybe I missed it, Mary. Um, the spike you're talking about, are you talking about the county numbers? Or spikes within the Ripon? Tri-county area that we serve?
Yeah, I think, uh, it, really, we'd be looking at what we're seeing with cases, um, positive cases within our, our student community. Um, would be our, our closest data points that we would want to follow. Um, but then certainly we would be receiving recommendations either from the city or county if, if even more things across our community were going to be closed down, the school would certainly follow suit. And then, you know, again, we saw this spring where it was, um, actually a, a state directive, um, which the governor still has the power to do. Um, in terms of, of something statewide for school closures. And I know Mr. Hatland's on here, um, I don't know if there was anything that he wanted to share or, um, Chris, I know you worked on this plan, um, as well. And I believe Mr. Uh, Mr. Bungie's on as well.
I'm here, just to let you know I'm here. I really don't have anymore to say. I mean, it's, um, you know, it's a kind of a work in progress and we're kind of using the blended approach as an on-ramp to go either way, as Mary kind of described already.
What about zero or banned?
Yes.
Is that still going to exist or is that going to go away?
Uh, well, I, I would say it's just like, it would be like anything else in our schedule is, um, it would exist. Now we just have to figure out how it can exist. As Mary alluded to ear- earlier, when someone asked her about banned, what does that actually look like? You know, and Sandy was getting some more information that, uh, she was going to share with us when, uh, she received it.
Since the idea, uh, obviously the, the, with the cohorts, um, the days that they meet on makes really good sense pedagogically. In terms of cleaning, is the idea that there's one really deep cleaning thing that happens on Wednesday? Does anything happen on the weekend? Otherwise, because we are changing people from Monday to Tuesday and then we're changing people from Thursday to Friday. Um, how much cleaning gets done between those two days? Is it the idea that we don't need to worry that much for that? In, in that situation, as long as we can get really deep cleaning done once a week? Could you just talk a little bit about the cleaning, somebody?
Brian, I would let you do that if you're.
Yep, so. So really, really the, the deep cleaning would be really, uh, getting into those, all the cleaning, I mean, as I talked about earlier, we would really focus on touchpoints and desktops and things like that. As an everyday thing, um, but you know, Wednesdays could be our catch-up day of, you know, disinfecting, you know, down the hallways, that kind of stuff, or like scrubbing the hallways, um, cleaning bleachers, um, really the, the items that were, we, we won't get to. And they're not as high priority as a touch i- touch item. You know, we would use, we would use Wednesday or the off days to really keep the buildings, um, as, as good a shape as they are currently.
What happens for cleaning between classes? Cause at the high school, you've got people, new people coming into a room. So, you have touch surfaces all the time that you might want to have cleaned. Are the, are the students in one class going to be responsible for cleaning up before they leave that classroom or what, what's going on there?
Just working with, with, uh, the building grounds in our CISA six group, um, really the talk of, do we, do we have wipes available? Do we, do we, um, spray the desk with disinfectant and then let it dwell, you know, for that period of time in between classes? Really looking, you know, to do some kind of disinfecting in between classes. So you're not, you're not cross-contaminating after each person.
Good. Good question.
What's the situation with bathrooms while I'm on it for all the schools?
Um, my, my goal would be to, we'll try and hit what we can. Um, you know, we, we really focused on trying to change bathrooms to as much touchless as we can. Um, you know, but at the end of the day, um, you know, it would be very hard to clean every, every, um, facility or poor piece of equipment in that facility, you know, after every use.
Certainly that's going to have to be where a high level of, of just the student training and the hand washing and the hand sanitizers are going to have to be kind of that second line of defense.
Is there any thought of assigning bathrooms to particular people?
We have talked about that, especially at the elementary, just, just knowing who's in those restrooms and not having students really crossing across the buildings. Um, but I think that would be harder at the high school just because of the size of the building and students moving through.
David, this is Renee Bungie. Um, we are, we're looking to try to put something like this in place, um, at the elementary level and, um, again, um, having those kids assigned for the most part, especially when they grow, go as, um, groups. And we would encourage that to the degree possible that they would travel with their classroom, um, you know, and go at the same time. But of course, there are emergencies and things in between. Um, which we obviously would account for. But again, to the greatest degree possible, we would assign groups of kids to certain restrooms to limit traffic and, um.
Chrissy, what about state testing? You know, they didn't do it last fall, or last, this spring, I guess. So what are they going to do this year if we're going to be in this blended? Thing?
That's the million-dollar question, Joan. Honestly, right now, they are saying that they are still, um, planning for state testing, but that is yet to be determined. I guess we will see how things pan out.
Doesn't it seem a little late to kind of be making some of these decisions? I mean, not questioning you, Chrissy, but the state needs to get its act together as what it wants to do. We're not that far away from starting school here.
Right. Well, I think in regard to state testing, you know, if we end up going virtual for a good majority of the year, certainly it would be very, very difficult to, um, to expect to even be able to administer state testing, even if we were back in school. Um, you know, by that time period. So I think that they're just kind of waiting to see, um, you know, these first couple of months, what the trend is before they actually make that decision.
Good, thanks.
Yep.
Mary and Chrissy, speaking about performance, uh, standards, I was curious how, uh, given the continuously changing instructional circumstances that our students might be experiencing, how are we going to maintain, um, their academic performance in their ever-changing circumstances? I didn't hear a lot from parents from last semester that it was noticeably obvious that their grades, of the grades of their children kind of took a dip when everybody went online. Um, so I am just curious how, you know, we, we do need to be flexible and understand, you know, that we are asking a lot of our kiddos and our teachers and, uh, how we're just going to kind of continue to foster that excellence while, you know, recognizing that this is a very unique situation.
Yeah, absolutely, Nicole. And certainly we do have guidance documents that really help focus our instruction. Um, so that we can truly determine what those essential, um, standards are, so that kids have that background knowledge to be able to progress to the next levels. Um, certainly in our curriculum, we've already identified priority standards. I guess like we would call these or refer to these as essential standards that we really need to make sure that the kids know, um, and really work with the student to make sure that they have those, those necessary skills.
Sure. So we're still, we're skill-focused, you know, math and reading and, and, you know, the important criteria. I'm just curious if we're, you know, recognizing that things might be a bit more challenging to keep that high level of performance that we've been, you know, expecting from our kiddos.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I think, you know, we recognize that with our staff, um, as well as our students and, you know, have certainly communicated that to parents as well. You know, again, I think that's another reason why it's just, it's so important to try to get the kids back, um, into school and into some of those routines so that we can, you know, start to build that back up again. But as you know, it's ever-changing and it could go, you know, either way. Um, so we are definitely on top of that and certainly monitoring that in regardless of what direction we head.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole, I would just also mention, this is Renee, that, um, you, you know, we, we actually have shared that, that same concern about state testing when we met, um, with the DPI, oh, probably three or four weeks ago and, and our same concern about, you know, the, the equity for our kids and accessing learning and so on and so forth. And, um, I will say our, our Ripon staff did an outstanding job. Um, of doing everything they possibly could to provide for, you know, our students in an online forum. As we know, however, um, online learning is not for all students. It's not best for all students. So, you know, obviously there, there certainly um, were some challenges that way. But, um, we, we, we certainly did voice our concern that way and we know that we will have our work cut out for us. Um, but you know, as the team has talked about too, there becomes this, um, certain focus to not only on the academics, but that we are going to need to make sure we're providing for the social, emotional, um, and behavioral needs of our kids too, who have not been in a building, um, for about six months by the time they come back. So, um, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, last semester, it was incredible, the way that, you know, the district came together and provided for our kiddos and their families. And I think we're all just, you know, parent was a full-time employee to suddenly becoming a teacher and the teacher was an in-classroom teacher to becoming an online teacher. And yeah, this cut us all a little slack, I think, and we're all working so hard to get the best of our kiddos.
You bet, yeah. Our, our parents, um, deserve a huge shout-out for that as well. Thank you, Nicole.
Sure.
All right. Um, if you're okay, I would move forward to just, um, just that clarification. I know we had some questions early on. Um, how do we move between models and what are some of the, the gauges for doing that? Um, so again, it's those, you know, safety precautions, um, looking at limiting spread and exposure. Um, and then really looking at the, the possible staff exposure, student exposures, building exposures and what our actual numbers are. As we look to, to move back and forth and certainly need to consider the, the family and community needs and those social emotional needs, um, of students and staff in each of those models. And I know later in the evening, there's some information regarding, um, athletics, if, if you're able to move to the next slide. Really looking at, um, relying on guidance from WIAA and, and Fanalet County and just in terms of how to hold, um, safe athletic practices, um, competitions and events. Um, and how we're able to, um, resume school and make sure that that happens with even the clubs and activities that we, that we have. Um, not sure what that looks like, uh, for plays and musicals and, and student competitions. Um, some things are better suited to be moved to an online environment than others are. Um, so again, it'll be that, that ongoing communication, um, and really looking to see, um, what other does, what other districts, um, do. I know there's some communication across the state right now. We've seen, um, at least Madison College move to a, um, postponing fall sports until the spring, um, and actually starting sports after, um, January 1st with, uh, winter, um, sports, then having the fall sports and then the spring sports at the end of the year and modifying the length of schedule. So we really don't know exactly what, um, extracurriculars will look like in terms of, of some of those sports components. Um, but are looking for that additional information and guidance as, as we move forward. You know, it's challenging as we look to keep our students and our community safe, um, looking at how do we do that if we begin to, um, have students interact across districts, um, and, and across counties.
How much testing is available for, I mean, that's one of the big questions for athletics is whether athletes can be tested or not. Um, at the college, they were intending to test all athletes coming in, but the county now says they don't have enough tests to do that because of the spiking that's been occurring. Um, so just as a general question, how comfortable are we that there are enough tests in the county to deal with all our students? If not just athletics, but just all the problems that we might have during the year?
Yeah, and that, um, we would be able to get a test on demand because right now it's based on symptoms and exposure. Um, not simply because you're looking to pu- to play a sport or be engaged in extracurricular. So I think there's, there's going to be quite a bit more that comes in terms of what that, what that looks like. Um, and there's a significant amount of communication that happens every day, just in, in terms of, of all of these decisions and guidance. Um, move forward.
I will be very, just real quick, Mary, I'll be really curious what I, WIAA is going to rule on as far as fall sports. Because I got the real, I have real concerns if they're going to let football happen, but we can't put kids in schools because I want butts in seats. And if they're going to allow football to happen, but we can't have our kids in school, that's not going to sit well with me.
Yeah, and what I'm, what I'm saying is that WIAA is not going to make the decision. It's going to be on, on individual districts and as, as a collective group of districts, either in an area or within the state that will, um, be making that decision. Um, you know, if everyone's moving together, um, in sync, that's going to be, that's going to be really important. Um, because yeah, that, I think the priority is doing the academics first. Um, and then adding in those extra things to make the academics even stronger.
So are we going to have to get, yeah, I would agree. And so we would have to get, we would have to have everybody within our, our district then sign off if they wanted to play sports against each other?
Yeah, what's happening right now is, um, WASDA, the Wisconsin Association for District Administrators or Superintendents, um, is actually surveying districts. Um, to just kind of see where, where districts fall, um, in terms of, of whether they would support a shift like that to get kids in academically first. Um, and then, and then look to move forward with sports. I also think it would, it would not be healthy for our athletes if something were to happen in terms of one of our fall sports. And it would inadvertently lead to a, a large number of our students being quarantined in, in our district and not being able to, um, be available and be in-person for academics. So, so yeah, you know, we have to weigh all of that. And yet, um, certainly if we can, if we can do all of this and balance it and get good at the classroom part of it and the school part of it, then bringing in those extracurriculars is, is, is so important. Um, and I know there's, um, the conversation around the spring sports is that it would hit the end of the school year and into summer. And I know that, um, there's some strong feelings that that was, those were the seasons that were cut short this year. Um, and that they certainly would like to, to see if at all possible to have, have those spring sports seasons run this year.
Yeah, that's a good point. Good, thank you.
Yeah, great questions. More to come. Um, the next slide just, uh, really highlights the Brave programming. And again, we'll have the before elementary programming and the after-school programming for elementary and middle school students. Um, and that would be offered on, on site, um, in person. Um, and again, um, just as we saw last spring, if our schools go virtual, um, Brave would offer a, a virtual component and, and do some of that homework, um, help and support. Um, otherwise Brave will follow the same process and procedures. Otherwise BRAVE will follow the same process and procedures that are used during the regular school day to to keep students safe and to practice social distancing and and be able to to move back and forth between models based on on what we see with numbers as well. I know one of the questions that came up at the at the beginning of the presentation was just around that that travel notice, trying to just, you know, alert people that we need to be thinking about collectively what happens with those members in our community as we come together, as we've been out and about all throughout the summer. So really asking people to to do their summer travels and plans if they can and allow for a 14-day period where you aren't as engaged with others outside of our community so that we can come back together and hopefully keep our schools open by keeping our cases of COVID as low as possible. And it really is a a team effort. And this is what I know now as we start the school year. I have no idea what it will look like as we move into holiday season and and families are traveling to visit and meet with other families. We certainly, you know, want to do everything we can to keep our schools open, but understand, you know, we don't know what we don't know. And hopefully we'll know more as we as we move through the school year. So just that reminder to students and staff to do everything you can to have a period of of kind of a self-quarantine or community quarantine where where we're here in in Ripon and and trying to keep our numbers as flat as possible within our community and school.
Mary, I did just want to speak to the last sentence, the 14-day self-quarantine shortened by presenting a negative COVID test. We have been, you know, in contact when we're releasing patients who have beaten COVID, so to speak. They are required two negative COVID tests to be placed in different facilities or to return to specific types of jobs. So this is flexible, I guess, for you because sometimes they get false negatives as well. So.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we've seen a lot of requiring two negative COVID tests before being able to be replaced or to return.
Thank you. You know, and that was a good question. We haven't spoken a lot just about the process. When a a classroom may be be quarantined and and what that might might look like, but more information will come out about that as well and what those processes are. So I appreciate I appreciate that. Thank you.
This leads me to a question now, Nicole. Would you have any idea how many false positive tests there are? Like what's the percentage of testing done versus false positive tests? Because if we're getting false positive tests, that if they're not accurate, then how do you know you have anything or what you have?
My reference is to false negatives. And what, working on the COVID floor where I'm at, we don't get the false positives because they're actually quite ill. So I'm I'm not familiar with statistically how many false positives we're seeing in this area. Maybe a doctor like me be more familiar with that information.
You see a false negative?
Yeah, we see false negatives and they continue to be sick. And so, you know, you have a rapid test, you have a send-out test. There's different tiers of testing that's being done. So, yeah, we've we've definitely seen false negatives and the patient continues to become more ill. They return to the ER and, you know, may or may not be hospitalized. It just it just depends on visibility. But yes, we have seen false negatives.
Okay, sorry, I took it the wrong way.
Oh, no worries.
The rate of false positives and false negatives actually depends heavily on the prevalence of the disease in the community. If the overall incidence is low, the false rate tends to be higher, especially for the positives. If there's a lot of disease in the community, the rate tends or the test tends to be truer with a fewer proportion of false positives and negatives. Unfortunately, with COVID and many other viruses, false negative rate is higher in people who are asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, which, you know, is kind of a different ballgame when than testing people who are actually ill.
Okay, thank you.
On the other hand, the pre-symptomatic and asymptomatic are still infectious, correct?
Yep.
Which is why having two negatives is probably a good idea.
I think it may be reasonable to look at two negatives for someone who has been positive and is trying to return from school, trying to return to school. But what initiated this discussion was someone who traveled.
Yeah, but what I'm worried about is somebody who goes to Wisconsin Dells for the weekend and then immediately has a test. They go on Sunday, they get a test somehow on Monday. That's not very much time. I mean, they're probably pre-symptomatic at that point and then they're back in the school.
And and we certainly could adjust that to just a 14-day self-quarantine because at some point within those 14 days, they could develop symptoms, even if they've had a negative test early on.
Well, I think the.
That could be for.
Sorry, the policy itself seems to rely on the honor system to a certain extent regardless. You know, I mean, everybody can be doing any of these things and, you know, not mentioning it to anyone at the same time as well. So.
Correct.
Yeah. Two negative, I mean, yeah, I think, David, you might be correct. If someone's trying to abuse the system by going to the Dells, coming back, getting one negative, showing back up at school, it would be helpful to have maybe that second negative just to reiterate, just for our safety.
Or to recommend.
I just know there are a lot of people who aren't going to say anything. They're going to go do a lot of stuffing. They're not going to say anything. And that this really isn't enforceable and I think it's a great idea to get it out in front of everybody because a lot of people will follow it, but there are going to be difficulties with it, as you point out. I have a technical question, Mary, for a teacher who has to quarantine. Does that come out of sick days?
I'm just going to find out more about next week, what that looks like as I go to the the conference and it's specifically rated related to just all of the HR questions that are coming with this and what kind of time is available, what that looks like, so that we can be really clear with staff so they know what's available, so they're not worried either in terms of of what's available. Should they become ill, need to quarantine, or have a family member that has to quarantine?
Now presumably if they're quarantining but still able to teach, then it's not, then it's not a problem.
But not all of our staff members are teachers. Some have jobs that require them to be on site and so we want to make sure we know kind of what's happening with them and can provide that guidance to and keep their stress level low. And then just here at the end, our our staff member and input and just some of the operational procedures that they wanted us to be aware of as well as families and kind of what their preference was and what we really saw. You know, again, I mentioned earlier that 98% of teachers responding, that they were required to come back. They would return to their position and and really saying that to to be virtual is not ideal. And there are some certain safety procedures that they would prefer to see in place to make them feel more comfortable coming back. And then the same, again, the same kind of information for for families, really noting that, you know, at that three-five level, that 3K through five level, you know, that online was not ideal. It certainly isn't preferred at the upper grades either. So if we can get kids into school and keep them in school, that certainly is the direction that that we want to move as well. And then just in in terms of up next steps, obviously principals will continue to interact with their building level stakeholders and and their teacher teams to gain input and and as Chrissy said, go into these deeper layers to really know and understand what it looks like in their building. And then at the beginning of August, we'll we'll have parents actually let us know what learning model they're selecting at least right now, so we can plan for the start of the school year. We do have a a training that we're providing to all of our district and building leadership teams and support staff. We'll work in collaboration with Fond du Lac County Health Department, just in terms of all of the procedures around, you know, the the testing of students, those isolation rooms, what what those timelines and timeframes look like, what happens if we're notified by the health department that that someone in a classroom has has a positive case of of COVID? What are the steps that we need to take and what will that communication look like? And again, we've asked them to put together a flow chart so that we can share that out with parents and staff so everyone's on the same page in terms of of what we're doing and what we can expect to do.
Well, thank you, Mary. This has been a quite lengthy, but I think very necessary investment of time during our meeting to discuss a very complicated and problematic situation. I expect that as as your staff fleshes out the details, that there will be more communication to parents, well, to everybody in the district. And I would assume that that there might be some opportunities to gather more questions from from parents and from other people in the district.
Absolutely. And one of the things we're doing is putting together a frequently asked questions document to to answer that and divide to divide that up into sections. So if you want to know more about transportation, you can go to that section of the document to to learn more and know what that will look like or what quarantining looks like or, you know, how do you move between virtual and face-to-face as a family based on your needs? So we'll try to answer those questions. So if individuals have questions or board members receive questions, please send those to us so we can incorporate those those thoughts into those documents. And those will be posted online as well as sent out to parents. But the online versions will again continue to be updated as new questions come out.
So we're we, as a board, we're being asked to approve the plan as was presented. It's clear that not every possible scenario has been worked out to 100% certainty. It's also clear that a lot of time and effort and thought has gone into has gone into the plan. I also want to commend the board members for asking very detailed questions that help illustrate how much planning and thought has gone in already. And so I don't, I I'm not sure. I almost think that we just, given how much time and all the questions that we've asked, I think it, we should just move to calling for the vote, unless there are others that feel strongly that they want to make a statement or ask further questions.
Mary, it's Betsy. Are we, just so that it is out on the table, this is a start and we will continue to talk about this. We will get more detail. There will be more of planning, building by building, all these different scenarios that were brought up. There's more information to come. I just want to be very, very clear about that.
Yeah, that that's what the building principals are doing right now. They're working with Chrissy, with Becky, with Emmy, Brian, to to put those additional layers and details in place. And then those will need to be communicated out to to parents and families and we'll certainly share those with the board as well, so you know where we're going and what we're looking at. And again, we'll continue to update that frequently asked questions document, which I think will have a lot of those details in as well.
So what we would be voting on would be a start.
This, yep, this this framework, this overview, that this is is the general direction that we're moving in. And then it's going to need to ebb and flow as information comes available and as, you know, staff think of questions and concerns. We need to give kind of that freedom to the principals to make those building level decisions that will work best with their staff and with their parents as they do any other year in leading their building.
So all of that said, Gary, I would I would move that we approve the plan as put before us.
I think the motion's already on the floor.
Yeah, it's already on the floor, but thank you for stating what you're going to do. I I appreciate that. I I just want to say, you know, I think if you vote for this framework, this roadmap, what you're doing as a as a board member is acknowledging the the preference to send our kid to to make in-person learning available as our preference and but to be adaptive, but but to say that we're going to adapt to conditions on the ground as as they develop. I think that's what this roadmap does. And even though there are risks, I mean, there are risks in not sending our children, not making in-person learning available to our school, to our students. There are risks to the kids and the families and the economy if that if that option is not available. So I think that's what a positive vote for this motion signifies.
And and thanks for the clarification about where we're at in the process. The the initial motion was a while back.
Piggyback on what you said as well. I think that we did a good job, yes, in in trying to move our students back and into the school setting as as many people in the community feel that that is a priority. And I think the district did a really good job of also offering opportunities for our families who maybe aren't ready for that, maybe have family members that that are at risk to COVID or things like that. And we, y'all really did a good job offering a plethora of different viable options for families to decide what fits them best. So I think that is a job well done for sure.
I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I don't think I'm going to vote for this because to me, I like the direction it's going, but there are too many unanswered questions for me right now. And the, as far as I can tell, the entire basis for going back is believing that the risk for kids is not significant. And I don't think we really have enough evidence to say that. I would much prefer to start virtual and see what happens in other school districts that are going to take the risk. I would rather let them take the risk. And then if we see that in fact it is a negligible risk to have all the kids come back to school, then I would use this plan to put them back in school. But I am unconvinced, I don't think any country in the world has really tried in a situation like ours to put kids back in school. We know we're going to compromise on distancing. We know we're going to compromise on other things. The only exception I would make is I would put the K two kids back in school because I don't think they can do anything virtually. And I think there's probably enough indications that the really young kids are not particularly at risk. I would, I'd be willing to take that risk, but otherwise I don't think I'm willing to take the risk again.
And speaking of that risk, I do have one last final question before we take that vote.
Go ahead.
I would like to know, and I I didn't hear this mentioned earlier, what what does it look like for liability if, for example, a student or a teacher or support staff, God forbid, caught the virus and ended up dying as a result of the virus? What does that look like for the district in terms of liability?
I guess I would throw that to to Jonah a little bit, just in terms of what that looks like. I know in terms of students, we are offering multiple options and certainly working with staff to meet the requirements in terms of if they have a qualifying condition to not return to work or providing those alternatives where possible.
Yeah, I would, I would just add that, you know, to be found liable, we'd have to be negligent in some way. I would just add that, you know, to be found liable, we'd have to be negligent in some way. School districts have a lot of legal protections in Wisconsin. And I I wouldn't be concerned about the liability of that. You know, we operate our school year. When we know that there are other illnesses and so on, and. We're not found negligent for those illnesses. And we wouldn't be found negligent for this either by running the, you know, school as normal.
Okay, thank you, Jonah.
And and we're certainly not planning to run school as normal. As the plan shows.
Correct, by having a face to face component.
David, can I ask you to elaborate? Are you concerned that the environment is not sufficiently safe enough for the students? That position?
Yes, there's no question. I don't know of any college or university that would put students back into the classroom in the in the circumstances that we're talking about. For adult, young adults, we we wouldn't do this. And I'm not sure what the safety is. I know that there was a. A camp down south, an overnight camp where 41, turning into 82 kids of teenage years. Got sick. So clearly, as the kids get older, there's a good chance that they can pass it on to each other. I mean, the whole thing is, can we keep it out of the school in the first place? That's the first question. And if we can't do that. Then the question is, and are kids really going to help drive it? And they haven't. But every article I've read says, but we don't really know. In Israel, where they held school and they did not lock down particularly, they didn't take very many considerations, they did have school problems. So they're an example where there were some issues. Most places I've read about, as the situation gets worse in the community, they definitely shut down the schools too. We're running on a borderline as far as I can tell right now. If the situation improved, I would be much happier. But the way the whole country is going, and Wisconsin is a big piece of it. In fact, we're one of the worst pieces of it. In in terms of the rate at which we're, our situation is worsening. I'm not at all confident that we know enough about how kids are gonna. Drive this and and are they going to get sick and and is this all going to work out? Because we know it's not going to look really nice when you get in the classroom on a day by day to day basis. This, it it just isn't. And we're already saying we can't distance the way the recommendations go. So I I would rather let somebody else take the risk and let us start online and see what happens. And then if we have evidence from other schools around the state, and not all of them, a lot of them, some of them are going virtual, I know. But if if we see that it's working out for them, then I would say, okay, now we have much better evidence that this is a safe thing for us to do too. I don't know that I want to be on the lead, the edge. But it's very difficult, this, it's a very difficult thing for me to say and and I and I really do appreciate all the work that's going in and will continue to go into this.
Is Dr. Light still on, Mary?
I don't know.
Mary, I believe I saw Dr. Light, I'll leave the meeting, just a little while ago.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to call for the vote unless anyone else wants to make a. Ask a question or make a statement. Okay. I like for the vote. Okay, and this motion passes. Six in favor, three opposed. Okay, thank you very much. Our next item for discussion, our next action item is considering approval of advertising signage at Ingalls Field. Would somebody care to put this motion on the table, please?
I'll move. Gary?
All right, that's Betsy, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Oh, second is Andy.
Thank you, Andy. Do we have any questions with regard to the? Ingalls Field signage advertising memo?
Gary, this is John. I guess what's going to be on the sign? The Ripon Area School District?
Well, presumably the names of the businesses, but. I don't really, that's a good question.
Yeah, this, this, this particular sign, it would have the Ripon Area School District logo on it. And Jonah, I can let you speak to it a little bit more and and Tom as well. I think the feeling is that we're, we're looking to have an advertising for us to have a space on that, on those boards as well. So in a sense, the dollars we're, we're spending on the sign are really coming directly back to, back to the district.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, so we're spending money to put our own sign on top.
Right.
But then the money is coming back to us.
And. You know, Ripon College is going to have a prominent sign in the middle of the. The board and we wanted to have one that was parallel matching it. Just to add our branding and as Mary said, the, the funding is really going right back into all the projects at Ingalls Field. So it seems like a good thing to do, but that's our thoughts.
It's basically asking the board to invest $10,000 into those improvements within Ingalls Field.
Oh, because it's coming out of Fun Town.
We're going to be spending money on Ingalls Field no matter what.
Correct.
So this is a spend to have our branding. Prominent on the sign.
Yeah, there's a certain portion, Jonah, that actually goes to the cost of the sign. Guess I should say that.
So how is this different? Excuse me, how is this different from us just putting a sign up? It's our field. We can put a sign up if we want to. What's the difference between our putting a sign up and then spending money on Ingalls Field as we need to, which is what we're going to do anyway?
It it really is a lot different, except that we do have to pay for the sign.
This is supporting that the Ingalls Field group as well. They had asked us to. To make a donation to be one of the, the sponsors, just like they're raising all these community businesses. And, you know, just as a sign that we support that group. Just participating when everyone else does. This summer as they're, I think they've sold all the spaces now. On the east board, so.
Jonah, you mentioned that Ripon College will have a sign. Are we going to make an effort to have? Parallel, for lack of a better way to put it, branding. They've got their Red Hawk R, we've got our Tiger R. So that. There's, there's some kind of coordination in terms of the design?
Yeah, it's interesting because that's what I was thinking too, and we were like, yes. And then Ripon College decided to use their more traditional logo with their building. And their year of establishment. So we may be looking just to see how we can use our. More of our business logo, but actually incorporate in the tiger, because I think that's what really represents. The district beyond even athletics is is our Ripon logo that matches the logos of other entities within our city. But to see if we could somehow put the tiger. Within that, maybe in grays or something like what we have when you first come into the high school on that wall. So it would be a dressed up version of our more professional logo, so it would match the colleges. Knowing that our motion are for the college and the district would be in other places across the field as well.
Thank you.
Are there other questions about this, this motion? Okay, I will call for the vote. Okay, this motion passes. Seven to one with one abstention. Thank you very much. Now we come to. Considering approval of the COVID. Staff handbook addendum as presented. Would anyone like to put this motion on the floor, please? Would someone like to put the motion on the floor, please? So moved.
So.
Thank you, David. And thank you, Nate. Okay, the addendum is given as part of the motion. Do any board members have questions about this addendum, which. Addresses changes. In workplace protocol for our staff? Oh, go ahead, David.
Just a question. So on the face coverings. Are employees required to wear masks for all meetings? That are held?
But yeah, we actually had had good discussion about that this week, and I think it it came up because we're starting to have some, some gatherings and. And staff meetings. And we felt like we should be practicing what we're asking to occur. Within our our high schools when we have our groups of students and staff together. And and so we said, yes, that they, that they would. But again, just a discussion we had this week, as those teams are starting to come back together. And just that awareness of. You know, different situations. And and their risk factors that that would be. Not only probably healthiest and keep everyone healthy, but also most considerate.
And and would most? So in most of the things that I've read, because I was part of setting up the return to work stuff at the college. The recommendations are still that as much as possible, meetings be held virtually. Are there at least going to be virtual? Accommodations for people to join meeting, that is for people to join meetings virtually instead of being there? Is that part of the policy?
I I think it certainly can be, because we know that that's the recommendation. And and so to have that option when, when feasible is certainly out there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about this? Motion? We will call for the vote then. Okay, the staff. Addendum, the addendum to the staff handbook is passed seven to one with one abstention. Thank you. Okay, our next action item. Is to consider approving. An Odyssey elementary. Position and stipends for the specials. Let's put the motion on the floor and then we can ask Jonah. Questions or Mary? Would someone care to move?
So moved, Gary.
Thank you, Nicole.
Andy, I have a second.
Was that John?
That was Andy.
Oh, thanks, Andy.
And I'll let Jonah speak more specifically to this if if there are questions. And we did something similar with PE last year and had good results and. Kind of tested the waters a bit with with art last year in order to provide. That face to face option for students. So this is creating that pay structure to be able to do that. Jonah, if there's anything else you wanted to add or questions board members may have?
I was just going to add Rebecca is actually on. She might be the best person to talk about it.
Very good.
Yeah, Rebecca, do you want to speak to kind of what you're seeing and and the requests you're seeing from families?
Sure, absolutely. This is Rebecca Miller. I, last year, we were able to offer, we had started with the FIAED option. At the middle and high school level. In order to provide individual sports studies. A lot of families that we work with at Odyssey were looking to. Receive some type of recognition for, you know, if a child is participating in football or soccer seasons. Setting personal goals. In order to receive credit for some of those courses for FIAED. For art, we had planned to do in person classes until COVID hit. Instead, our art teacher who we had hired, Laura. She was able to very quickly record all of those lessons and push those out to all of our families who had requested those. Using common household materials. So our families were really grateful to receive those opportunities in their homes. We have families who are looking to do in person if the situation again arises. Due to the ever changing COVID situation. But some families who prefer just to have those virtually as well and access them from home. We would like to do the same for music, so we are currently looking for a music teacher to provide similar opportunities. Potentially some face to face music classes as well as. Recorded live classes that would be pushed out to our families who are interested. And this is for K through 12th grade that we'd be servicing for.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other questions? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Okay, our next action item is to consider overload pay. For middle school and high school teachers. Can I have a motion? Please?
So moved, Gary.
I beat you to it, Andy.
Nope, you got me. I'll second though.
There you go.
Thank you, guys. Where are you? Here we go. Okay. Questions for the principals or? Or Jonah with regard to the overload pay? Okay, it's good to know that we have teachers who are willing to do the extra work for the overload pay. I do appreciate that. Are there, okay, if there are no questions, then we'll proceed to the vote. Uh, the vote, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, now we have a, a motion to, um, our voluntary transfer. Would someone please to, uh, please move this?
So moved.
Thank you, David.
I'll second.
Thank you, Nate. This is pretty, um, straightforward, but if there are any questions, now is the time. Concerns? Okay. Call for the vote. The transfer is approved unanimously. Now we come to, uh, hiring recommendation. Would somebody please, um, put this one on the floor?
This is John. I'll make a motion.
Thank you, John.
I second.
Thank you, David. Questions or concerns about these proposed hires? Comments? Call for the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we're now coming to possible upcoming action items. The first one is, uh, a resolution to add a referendum question to exceed our revenue limit for non-recurring purposes. Would someone care to put this on the table, um, to be voted on? Oh, I'm sorry. No, we are possible upcoming actions. Okay. So are there any questions with regard, well, are there any questions with regard to this or, or should we have Jonah sort of summarize what we're trying to do here? Maybe that would be the best thing.
Sure. Um, so we are imitating other school districts that have, uh, passed a non-recurring referendum for operations. Um, and so we are, and we're following the advice of our clerk from Fond du Lac County. And, um, this is just kind of part of the process. This is one of the official notices that needs to be published, um, before it can go to voters. And the vote itself is just asking us to continue the non-recurring operational referendum that we've had for the past 12 years. Um, and we called it levy neutral. Um, it's something that will not in itself increase tax rates. And it's used for curriculum, technology and maintaining facilities, so.
Thank you for that ex- explanation. Are there any uh, questions or concerns that people want to ask now? Knowing that we will be voting on this, um, next month?
Jonah, I just had a clarification. I know in terms of, um, curriculum, and I don't know if it applies to technology as well. We had, um, discussed, obviously it's curriculum materials which can be online items, um, as well as the actual physical textbooks. Um, but I know there was a request to also have it support some of the initial trainings when a new curriculum, a new curriculum platform, curriculum materials being adapted.
Um, yeah, it's, I, you know, Chrissy right now uses her, um, budget to cover some of that. Um, if you wanted us to reword the, the question or the, we could potentially reword it.
Yeah, I didn't know if we needed to reword the question as much as I know, um, last time we, we just provided a little bit of, of detail in a document, kind of what we thought, um, would be spent each year. And I thought if we were to acknowledge it in that document which goes along with this, um, that might be really helpful. And I know I, I've referenced that document and I've shared that with community members, um, over the course of the past six years, just in terms of kind of what would be in line to be updated in, in, in terms of curriculum and those kind of things.
Yeah. Yeah, we could definitely do that. We could definitely have a timeline. We have a, a very rough plan for how the spending would go for the next six years. Um, in some years it would, you know, it would shift maybe to facilities when we do a middle school roof. Um, then it would shift back to technology when they're, um, replacing devices. But, um, yeah, we could definitely make that part of, uh, the board docs.
For, for August, I think.
Yes.
This would be great. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions or concerns that will help us, um, decide on voting next month on this? Okay, um, let's move to the next item. Uh, this is an item that discusses some possible technology to assist with our, um, plan to, um, go back to school. Travis, do you have any, um, thoughts that can amplify the memo?
Uh, really, I'm looking at quotes, uh, like I said, for all like different types of systems to see what the cost is and what best fits the needs. Um, and they also, you know, I'm requiring that it works with Google Meet, which is what we've used and what we'll continue using so that not only can we, um, live stream it, but it will record, um, as Google Meet does to drive, um, and being able to use that equipment to do that.
You mentioned the, uh, E S S E R grant program. There's some money available for that, but I was just wondering whether that money is specific for, or whether we've perhaps looking at other places to spend that money?
Uh, yeah, so that Esser Grant, I don't know if we've talked to the board about this, but it's, um, it was just released re- sometime recently. Um, but it can be used in a lot of different ways to respond to coronavirus and, you know, uh, you know, the changing needs. Um, it, you know, we're gonna, I think we're gonna spend all of that money by the end of August or at least by the end of September, just because, uh, there are so many things that we need to do, um, district-wide. And so anyways, it's, it's a great thing. It'll either be used on this technology or it'll be used to, you know, buy thermometers and masks and uh, hand sanitizer and just a million other things. Um, but I think we're gonna use it very, very quickly, but it is a very nice uh, thing that we received from the, uh, federal government, so.
Okay, um, and how, let's see, how many, okay, how did we come up with a hundred classroom units? Do we actually, what is that? Well, how many classroom units are there? How many classrooms are there in the district and what percentage would these cover?
I looked at, we have it at a couple of schools. It was 25, uh, units per school that can be set up there. Then being able to be utilized by the staff in each building.
Okay.
So we, we have, you know, let's say a hundred and 29 teachers or something in the district, uh, brick and mortar. Um, but so not every teacher would have a device, but we also, just talking with the principals, we don't know if every teacher needs a device. They can certainly, you know, find ways to share it or, um, some teachers may choose not to use these devices, but it does give 25 devices per building.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions about this particular possible upcoming action? And we don't have a budget yet. We don't really know how much, we don't have quotes yet.
No. I'm working on that because what I'm also requiring is they have to have the inventory. Um, this isn't something that we can look at ordering and then we're stuck with waiting, you know, months to get the, the equipment in. You know, I need to know that the, the equipment's there if we do order it and can move forward quickly.
Yeah, that, that's pretty much my next question was going to be that, so.
Yep. No problem.
Okay, are there other questions about this particular upcoming action item? Thank you, Travis. Next, we have a series of, um, recommended changes to administrative guidelines. From what I remember in working on these, um, most of them were, were technical wording changes. David and Mary, am I right about that?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to move through these, um, these items then.
If anyone, as you go through those has questions, the policies are on for three months, so we certainly have time um, to review or look at anything. If you have questions or anything comes up in the next two months before they're finally approved.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, uh, let's, uh, we are, we're now at the, uh, superintendent reports section of the meeting. And, uh, Mary, if you'd like to talk about the Journey Charter contract update.
Uh, yeah, you know, as we, as we move forward, um, and looked at lifting the caps on, um, the charter schools to allow families to move between the three, we removed the lottery language and the state told us we needed to put it back in. So now you're seeing the document with that language, um, added back in. So it's basically what we had always done. Um, but that, that information is in here, so it's just, um, clear. Um, and we just felt it was really important to bring that back so that you're aware of that because, um, the, the change in our process reflected a change in the contract, but the contract is back to how it was, um, in the past.
So our process will then have to change back?
No, our process will be fine, but the language has to be in there whether you use it or not. Is, is we, is basically what we heard from the state, so. It still meets the spirit of, um, of what the board wants, uh, because that's our practice, but the process has to be in there in case it is needed.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, they have their checklist that they look for and it, it red flagged because that wasn't in there, so. Um, next is just the summary from, um, our end of the year Inglesfield, uh, meeting when we approved and extended the Inglesfield contract. When one of the things we put in there was that leadership from both organizations would meet annually, um, just to review upcoming projects, um, and review celebrations and opportunities for growth. So you see some of the things that are on our radar for the future. Knowing that, uh, that track is going to need to be done, we're thinking probably 2024. Um, and then we just highlighted some of the projects that are up, um, to be addressed, uh, through our maintenance budget. Um, and again, that would be shared two-thirds, one-third with the district and the college. Um, so you can kind of see, um, what we're looking at moving forward, so. I, that was a very nice meeting.
Could I make a, a comment? It just occurs to me that in this time of the pandemic, one of the issues with artificial turf is that it's got no bacteria in it to eat anything up. And so you really need to wash it if it gets dirty and athletes spit all the time and we put signs up and say, don't. But I think, you know, it's the thing that we paid a lot of attention to when we first put the turf in and then over the years it got less and less and less noticed. I think now is a good time to make a particularly big point about that. Again, that we have this nice new turf. It doesn't clean itself the way grass does, so we need to remind athletes and coaches that they need to treat it properly.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, would be a good time to remind, uh, teams about that as well.
Well said, David. Okay.
I was curious why 2024 was the year that we were looking at possibly redoing the track instead of perhaps sooner?
Mm-hmm. Uh, Jonah, would you be willing to address that?
Yeah, um, the Fund 46 that we started in the 1819 school year, we're gonna have access to those funds for capital projects like the track in 2024, uh, April 2024. The, there is, uh, definitely some talk, uh, that we needed before then. I don't know. We'll have to be, we'll have to see if there is a way that we could afford to do it earlier or otherwise we know we have funds set aside that are available in April 2024. So that's, that's why that was stated that way.
Okay, thank you, Jonah. I, I also heard similar sentiments as to perhaps a need to do it sooner, so I was just curious why there is that specific 2024. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions about Inglesfield?
All right, um, one of the things that we had talked about, um, at the last meeting was just looking at, um, reviewing our platform for future, uh, Board of Education meetings. And we talked whether we would stay virtual or if the board would go back to face-to-face.
This is John. I have no problem with face-to-face.
I would echo that as well, John. Uh, city council has been meeting in person throughout the pandemic and I think if, if if it would make everybody feel comfortable, we can all wear masks and we can practice social distancing if we were to meet in a community room.
I, I would expect that we would be masked. Um, I, I'm very happy to meet, uh, in person. Um, and I'll be masked.
My attendance would depend on what the situation looks like. I would like to have a virtual opportunity.
So Gary, you're saying you, you want to be masked or you don't want to be masked?
I will not come unless everybody is masked. I might not come anyway if things continue to spike and I would like to have the opportunity to call in, which I believe I always do anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we would, uh, maintain that option. And I would expect, uh, the attendees to be masked. The in-person attendees to be masked.
Yep, happy to meet in person, happy to mask. It would be great to see everybody.
I would really like to come, but I am not gonna do the mask thing. So if that's what you want to do, Gary, that's fine, but then I would do it virtually.
Okay.
Are we discussing meeting in person or are we discussing meeting in person and requiring masks? Or, I guess what?
We were, we were discussing meeting in person. I won't come unless everybody's masked. John won't come if he has to wear a mask, so regardless, somebody is probably going to be.
attending virtually.
And Gary stated that he expects us will be masked, so I will be remote.
I mean, I don't think I necessarily have the power to forbid people from not being masked, but that would be my, you know, that's my expectation.
Having virtual as an option is a wonderful thing.
Josh, you want to weigh in here? I don't think I've heard you in the last three hours.
My thought would be if we're requiring staff to wear masks in meetings or in classes, that the board should follow that policy as well in the building and any, you know, if we're requiring guests or anybody else, that we should follow the policy as well.
Yeah, I, I, that is, that's the main reason for my, for that expectation that I expressed. Thank you.
In regards to meeting, I'm fine with meeting in person.
Any other board members want to share their thoughts?
I would like to meet in person. I, I will be wearing a mask given my profession for sure. I have, I should always wear a mask when I'm around other people who don't, don't come into contact with patients the way that I do. So I will be wearing a mask.
Okay, so I, I, I think I hear a consensus that members would like the opportunity to meet in person with a virtual option. So Jolene, I'm assuming we can, we can do that, correct?
To meet in person with masks with a virtual option.
That's, that would be my, that would be certainly my preference.
And Gary, Mary and I could certainly work with Brian and his facilities team that sets up the community room for your meetings. And I'm sure that we could try to space seating out as, you know, in the best way possible to also just do things similar to what we're doing with the rest of staff, like, like has been mentioned previously.
Yeah, we'll need to also allow for the, the, the public to be able to come to the, to the meeting if it's in person, I think.
We do have additional, extra masks available as well as hand sanitizer stations that we could, I could work with the staff to have that available for anybody that would want to attend the meetings.
Is there anyone else who wanted to weigh in regarding face to face meetings and whether we should be masked or not? With the virtual option?
Mary, I just had one more question. If, does that mean then that the public would also be open to writing down their comments or requesting to speak for that opportunity in the beginning of the meeting like normal?
They would be able to do that and they would just wear a mask.
Oh, they, yeah, okay. So that we'd have any visitors or any speakers also be wearing masks. Okay, all right.
And would we be able to provide masks for visitors? Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Uh, one more, Gary. Have we been able to work out whether or not we can have actual coffee at our meetings in person now? Or it could be granular, mix it up with hot water?
I have made the, I will make the request again, Nicole. So there's real coffee.
Because this, so far, it's 9:15. This is a long one. We should have some coffee for sure. Thank you.
You're gonna have to put a hole in your math, Nicole.
I've been wearing a mask for months. I know how to pull a coffee in a mask. Don't worry. I'm a professional.
Okay, well, now that the coffee question is settled, we can probably move to Was, 2020 WASB resolutions.
And we just like to include these. I think board members have received these already, but we like to put those on the, the board meetings so that they're easily accessible to the public so they know what WASB is moving forward with and supporting. And WASB is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and our school board is a member.
Tom is, is, Tom usually our delegate?
He has been all the years that I've been here, although I think Nicole expressed interest this past year.
Well, I would encourage board members to, if they find a resolution that they're particularly interested in, to communicate with Tom and/or Nicole.
Is it a team effort this year? I like it.
Okay. Next, are there legislative updates that you can share with us, Mary?
Really, the, the most significant, you know, just letting you know, and as I've mentioned a couple of times, I'll be getting some legal updates next week. As I'll be participating in a legal seminar, so I'll be hearing more of what's, what's coming and, and what's on the doc as we return to school. And I think the biggest areas of clarification are just some of the ones we discussed in terms of staff and making sure we're supporting them in every way we can as we come back as employers.
Thank you, Mary. Okay. Next, we have a memo that contains the return to play guidelines. I'm not sure who the best person is to present this. Perhaps Mr. Kinzinger?
Probably Mr. Kinzinger, and he is not with us. So I think for you to view to see what's, what's you know, what we're looking at in terms of a return to play, assuming that there is a season and just what WIA is looking at in terms of some of the guidelines. But again, I think that larger question is what's happening across the state in terms of prioritizing athletics and starting that at when we would start a fall season, if it would indeed be in the fall, or if it would be a shortened season or perhaps get pushed to the spring.
So again, we don't really have enough information to know exactly what's going to happen, but this is the way that people are thinking in, you know, if there is a season, this is how we would do it, I guess.
So just wanted to make sure you had that information.
Questions or comments from board members? Okay. Next up, interim budget report. We all have the attachment. Jonah, is there anything in particular that you'd like to highlight?
I don't know if there's anything necessarily to highlight. We're trending well at the end of the year. We received some unexpected revenue from Ripon College. So basically, you know, some of the unexpected revenue will be, will help us add to Fund 46, which is very important to keep property taxes low. But yeah, we're ending the year well, is what I would say.
Thank you. And we have the May food service report. Any items of note that you'd like to highlight here, Jonah?
I, I made a comment that we were trending toward having a more than 20,000 net income. I think the actual number will be right around 16,000. It'll be slightly more than 16,000. Just based on some additional revenues and expenses that we've had. So that's, that's about where we're ending with a positive 16,000, which is actually what we had budgeted. Pretty close to what we had budgeted. So and that's, that's mostly luck, but the, but anyways, so yeah, so it's, it's a positive. We have a, we have a positive balance from last year and we're going to be able to add to it, so.
Okay, thank you, Jonah. Okay, it's now time to consider adjourning to our executive session. Board members, you should have received an email with a link to the executive session meeting. So if this passes, I guess we will end our meeting and go into executive session. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, David. And
I'll second.
Second from Nate. Okay, thank you. Time for the vote. I think that passed. Yes, nine to zero. Okay, so this will end our public session. And